Good evening, everyone. Today, July 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 P.M. I call for order. Please join me for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There he is.
Okay. Morocco.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasure Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Alamoaku here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And trustee Tutter.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Um, we need to, I guess we're gonna do an amendment before we-
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding regular business L4, request to approve 2024 budget amendment number 24, land purchase at 5854 Dixie Highway.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Board and public announcement? Anybody from the board? Carrie?
I have several. As we all know, election day is approaching in two weeks. So far, the clerk's office has issued 7,434 absentee ballots with 34% or 2,567 already returned. As a reminder, absentee ballots must reach us by 8:00 P.M. on election day to be counted. We strongly advise using our secure drop boxes or delivering ballots directly to our station at the clerk's office. Absentee ballots can also be processed through the tabulator at early voting sites or on election day. As of July 2nd, election materials are collected several times a day from each drop box when open for business. All ballots and applications collected from a drop box are transported in an approved ballot container and returned to the clerk's office without delay. This is applicable to all drop boxes in our jurisdiction. Although only required for a drop box that is not located on the grounds of a clerk's office, our office documents each box, each drop box retrieval. Collection information such as date, time, location, name of person collecting, the document type, the number of, is logged, preserved, and maintained for no less than 22 months following the election. Voters should be careful when completing their primary ballot. To avoid errors, select candidates from only one party and review all choices carefully, including the reverse side of the ballot, before submitting. Voting across parties will invalidate the partisan section of your ballot. And lastly, early voting starts this Saturday, July 27th, and runs until August 4th. Operating hours are 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m., except on Thursdays, the hours then are noon to 8:00. You can vote early at Brady Lodge in Bay Court Park or at the Waterford Oaks Activity Center. And that's all I have.
Sam?
Yeah. I would just like to take a moment to commend Lisa Christiansen for once again stepping up to run the Parks and Rec Department. She's remained focused on the parks and seniors over the last couple decades or so, and in a professional manner. Even though she's not been properly recognized and elevated to the director's position she has earned, she has been asked again to be the interim director of Parks by a supervisor who has refused to elevate her to the position. I do not agree with his decision, and I want to thank Lisa for her service to our community and her resilience for working here. That's all.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, and, okay. I will-
I have a quick one.
Okay. See, Terry.
I requested an email, I don't know what happened to it, to kind of be on the agenda for a update on the lobbyist that we hired that I voted no against, but I'm curious, you know, that was a lot of money, and what have we seen?
Sure.
What kind of benefit have we got from that so far?
Sure. We will respond some ways what we got. Sure. Jennifer, take a note, please, and we will reply to trustee Alamo to some updates on what we're doing. Thank you. Okay. Now, anyone else? I just wanna point out something. I have been knocking on doors, talking with people, and a few concerns, reasons brought my attention, that a few board members has been mentioned that something like, is the way I understood that it's already something about you guys have the votes to get a superintendent, regardless of the election. And to me, it was kind of surprising to hear that, because I don't recall having any public meeting talking about that. And I believe since we are close to the election, it should be appropriate to disclose if that's true or not, and who are the members that are willing to do that, I think. Or people have the right to know who is gonna be supporting a superintendent after the election, who's not. At least, I don't support a superintendent, but I wonder, is it fair to, for the people, the voters, to know who is gonna be supporting that? That's all. If that's true, I, it's what I hear when I'm knocking on doors, is I got the name of a couple board members saying that, a couple board members told people when I'm knocking on doors saying that they are, that they have already the votes, but since we have, as you know, a couple incidents when we have people in a bar, meeting and talking, it wasn't, I was told it wasn't township business, but then, is the rumor up there, then there's already a decision made, there's gonna be 6-1 for superintendent, and I'm kinda, I don't think so it's true, I think it's, I have, I have to believe that it's just a rumor, but since I have the names and everything and the people, they brought that to my attention, I think it's serious, I just wanna ask, is this something that is true about that or not? I don't support a superintendent. That's all I wanna say today. Uh, we still have him-
Overcomment, just overcomment after that?
Yes, that's right. Okay. All right. Board, public announcements. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Now, one more now, public comments. State your name and address.
My name is Tony Hul. I'm the chapter chair for the local union here that works for the township. Jose, last Thursday, between the hours of noon and 1:00, on Thursday, during Kevin's lunch hour, you called Kevin Daniels and accused his mole crew of placing signs in front of your signs. Kevin told you that was not true, 'cause Kevin trains his people not to do that. He asked you for proof, you said you had proof of this. Have not seen it yet, would like to see it. Just for your record, Kevin Daniels, we have five people work here now, that used to be seasonal part-time people that worked for Kevin Daniels, that work full-time now for the township. When he tells you, he trains his people right, he trains them right. You told him you had proof, we wanna see that proof.
Okay. Just to straighten the record, I did not say I have a proof, I asked a question. If some of people that, on the group was putting, moving signs and proving that around, that's all I asked, I never says I have proof, I just ask a question.
And said the mole crew was doing it.
I have a question. So I never says those.
I thought we weren't supposed to reply to the overcomment.
Please.
Hi, my name is Julie Raish. I live at 5077 Timber Ridge Trail, and you'll have to excuse me because I left my regular prescription glasses in the car, so. In order to see what I need to say, I need these. And I think actually this is kind of a very good segue to the previous comment. I have been a resident of this township for 30 years, and I have loved Clarkston, I've appreciated our small-town feel, I've appreciated the peacefulness that we have, I've appreciated all of the community sense that we have, but lately, that has seriously waned. And over the last several weeks, I have basically been inundated by just a overwhelming amount of political signs. And I know that we have township regulations, and I know that we have things that we are all supposed to follow. I'm a Wayne County sheriff. I sworn oath to my township, to my county, to my state, to my country. And I am more than positive that all of you had to stand up as elected officials, being elected by us, and I consider us your bosses. You are supposed to be representing us. So as an us person of this community, enough is enough. We have got to have restrictions on these election signs. To find that there are 12, 12 signs at the entrance to our subdivision for one candidate. There are 400 signs, 400, I counted, I went over today, between a mile radius and then within some of our different areas, the Kroger Shopping Plaza, the McDonald's, the, all of these things. I have to ask you, board members, when I'm looking at you, and for this, I will take off my glasses. This plethora of signs, do you think that we're stupid? Do you think that we don't know the candidates that we're voting for, that we have to see sign after sign after sign after sign after sign? And that was what, six times? The Kroger parking lot alone, there are 55 signs for you, sir. 55. I get it with the first sign, I don't need 55 of them to tell me who I should or shouldn't be voting for. And in fact, I think it actually is going to have the opposite effect. When I see the litter, literally, all up and down the Sashaba Corridor, all up and down the Dixie Highway, you don't see that in Lake Orion, you don't see it in Waterford, you don't see it in other counties or other municipalities, but here, it doesn't make us look any better than a piece of trash. It literally looks like litter, and the amount of signs up here is obnoxious, and it needs to change. And I think that there needs to be some consideration to changing our signage laws, so that that includes your political signs, not just saying, here's where it needs to be placed, but the number of signs that need to be placed within it. It is dangerous. It is dangerous for people that have to go out and continually remove signs, I know that you all have been notified, anybody that has a sign out there, I know that there are multiple emails that have gone out that have said, you need to remove them. What does it say to us, all of us, as registered voters, as the people that are giving you the spot on this board, when you don't follow the rules? When you think that there's a gray line? When you flat-out disrespect it altogether? Because I know that you've been told to remove some of them, and two days later, they're right back up again. That tells me that you have no respect for me as a registered voter of this township. And that, that is what's going to change my mind when I get to the voting polls on August 6th. So I would respectfully ask, number one, please remove your signs. We don't need 55 signs in one shopping mall to tell us that you're running. I think we're a lot smarter than that, and I think all of us would appreciate a fact that we dialed it back, and then we actually made that a regulation for this township going forward. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Pedersen, 6716 Almond Lane.
Mr. Hul.
As a former trustee of Independence Township, I'd like to apologize to you and Mr. Daniels for that action, and-
Don't apologize to him.
It will not happen again.
Show me the proof, that's all we want.
Mr. Aliaga, you made a video, and it went all the way to Peru. You got somebody who come from Peru all the way up here, you used our township offices, you used our township union personnel, you used our township fire department. I wouldn't say a whole lot about it, you had a suit on, but then you had a Vote For Jose shirt on. Let me tell you what, that's a campaign violation, you know that, right? You do know that. All right. I am turning you into the state for this. I am gonna get down to the bottom of this. I am not gonna let you abuse and use and dupe horseshoe woggle, whatever you wanna call it, how you made that video. Trustees, it's your job to take care of our employees and ensure stuff like that doesn't happen, ever. You will protect your employees, sometimes even when you think they're wrong. Mr. Aliaga, you did something most egregious to my township, and I am not gonna accept it. Mr. Aliaga, I am not voting for you this year. Mr. Tutter, you said something a few months ago that was very concerning to me, sir. You were, i.e. vetting, possibly vetting people as though they were activists, and that was your own word. I caught it. I don't believe that you did that on purpose. I believe your heart is true. Mr. Tutter, I will vote for you this year. Mr. Ritchie, hi, good evening, Ron. Unusual is the word. You said something a few months ago, that it was unusual for the township supervisor to not contact board committee members if they were not being reappointed. That's not necessarily true, it's been going on for a long time. Ron, I think your leadership on this board is stellar. I'm very, very happy with you. You bring a calming voice to this board, and it needs it. You've done a lot of things in our community, and I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate it. With that said, Mr. Ritchie, I will be voting for you. No, I don't pull the vote for one trustee, I vote for four trustees, that's lousy politics. Mr. Terry. Earlier this winter, somebody came up here and said that you weren't listening to the residents, and you had made a statement that you didn't have enough people come up here and complain about across the street here. I don't believe that's necessarily true. I went to a couple of those things, kind of incognito, nobody knew I was there. I don't really believe that you, yourself, Mr. Terry, um, really, you didn't, at the time, there were so many people here berating you. And I understand, I sat in your very chair, but I see much other brighter things out of you. You got, you got guts, and I appreciate that, and that's the kind of leadership that I want. Mr. Terry, I will vote for you this year. Mr. Newbeck. Ladies and gentlemen, meet the hardest working person in the township. You can't do her, you can't do her reelection, you can't do any of that, elections, all of that stuff. If you understood the timelines that she must go by, or she's in hot, hot water with the state. Mr. Newbeck, I am very proud of you as a resident of Independence Township. I've watched you from your very first day. Mr. Newbeck, I will vote for you. Mr. Brown, you've done something very, very uncanny, something I thought was just, it gripped me for a minute. A gentleman came up here and berated you. You had no idea what he was talking about. But, much like a man must learn to say he's sorry to his wife even when he's not wrong, so must an elected official say he's sorry to residents, even when he doesn't, didn't do anything wrong. I thought that showed a whole lot of guts to stand up and apologize to that man. That took a lot, that's the kind of leadership I wanna see. Mr. Brown, I will be voting for you this year.
Ran out of people.
Sam?
Not voting for me. He ran out, he ran out of people.
No, I didn't.
Well, you're running.
Sam, you and I-
They should save me for almost-
Sam, we've known each other for a very, very long time. You are a great leader in our community as far as volunteers, knowing with your preservation of Clarkston, and all the things that you've done for so many years, 18 years on a planning commission, et cetera. I get it, Sam, I get what you're trying to do. I understand. But I think you may have trespassed your authority in a bad way. I don't like it when township board members talk about our employees in derogatory ways. I don't like it when they're, they're the sole discussion of an entire township board meeting. Sam, I respected you for a long time, but I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not voting for you this year. Good evening, everyone.
Stay your name and address, please.
Tracy Pettengill, 8705 Deerwood Road. Just kind of running off the coattails of what he had just said. I noticed in the last meeting that, you know, you folks take a lot of grief verbally. It's a thankless job that you do, but I believe most of us appreciate what you do for us, you're our voice, and you have a vision for us, and for that, I thank you. I just wanted to go over some things that came to my attention in the last couple of weeks regarding the, the vote upcoming, so humor me. A letter I came across states, "I write in support of Carrie Newbeck, who is running for reelection as township clerk in Independence Township. Carrie has served her, her community with integrity and distinction and deserves to be reelected for another four years. In addition to serving on the township board and being the township's record keeper, the clerk also serves as the chief elections officer for the township. There was a time when the administration of elections and voter registration was straightforward, relatively simple matter of occasionally organizing election workers, maintaining registration lists and holding periodic elections. That time is no longer. Considerations ranging from ever-changing election laws like proposal 2022-2, which ushered in the most significant change to how elections are run in Michigan since the 1950s, to the demands of new technology have forever and radically altered the nature of the elections process. As a result, this profession is one that requires expert, trained administrators who understand the subtleties of the myriad of factors now making the administration of the elections process a specialty for which specific knowledge and abilities are essential. Carrie Newbeck is the only candidate for Independence Township clerk who possesses the knowledge and abilities to run the township's elections and safeguard the democratic process. Carrie was nominated as Township Clerk of the Year by Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks in 2024. She also obtained the Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk Level 3 designation, which is only one of less than 10 in the state, and is certified by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks as a Master Municipal Clerk. All of this means that she has dedicated hundreds of hours to continuing education and professional development. There is no other candidate running for clerk in Independence Township who is experienced and qualified as Carrie Newbeck, and I fully endorse her reelection as clerk. Sincerely, Sean R. Miller, Springfield Township Clerk." Thank you. One last thing I wanted to say, and this is kind of the converse of what I talked about with Ms. Newbeck. Unfortunately, on the converse side, I was saddened when I went to my mailbox on July 12th to see this. With all of the negativity in the national campaign, we definitely don't need that here locally. To start a mudslinging campaign with lies and half-truths just shows your fear of the competition and lack of depth. So if we cannot believe this side of your flyer, why should we believe this side? In my opinion, they negate each other. And as if that wasn't enough, you had the nerve to alienate the board by mailing this shortly thereafter. This many people cannot be wrong. It must be the denominator to all of them, which is you. Do better, Mr. Aliaga. Do better.
Good evening, everyone. Pat Kittle, 4647 Oakhurst Ridge Road. I hope that the board would take a moment or two and recognize Mr. Pearson, your new ordinance officer, for the outstanding job that he's been doing as, as pulling some of the, I refer to them as dandelions, all of the political signs, for some of the years. I don't think he's gone far enough, and I do agree with the young lady when she says that, I do hope that there are ordinances written in terms of the numbers that you would be allowed to put on individual corners. It's unsafe, it's unsightly, it looks like blight. Steve has done a yeoman's job, and I hope you take the time to recognize him and thank him. Second thing, I hope somebody from the board, whoever regularly meets with Pine Knob, the Sheriff's Department, and the Road Commission, to please do something about the traffic on concert nights in lieu of all of the construction that's going on. When you see gridlock on Clarkston Road from Sashaba all the way back to Main Street, and I could go on and on and on, there has to be something done in conjunction with those parties to put extra police officers on the corners, to allow extra provisions made for extra time for the lights, so that we can get these people through, trafficking onto their end, you know, destination, whether it's Pine Knob, or home, or wherever they're going. Somebody's gonna be in the world of hurt and needing an ambulance, and that ambulance will not be able to get there in this gridlock, in the gridlock that currently exists on concert nights. Please, I implore you, do something. Thank you.
Anyone online? Okay.
Hello, my name is Darwin Moore, 9165 E.V. Road, Clarkston, Michigan. For those of you that don't know, just again, for full disclosure, I will be running for superintendent as an independent candidate, so I will not be on the August primary. So, I may be working with all of you at some time, I may be working with none of you, I don't know. So I'm not here to offend anyone, or, or call any, or to say negativity about things, but I do want to put forth that, at our last meeting, I brought up a doc issue that has been going on for 12 years, over 12 years. I've asked people to get involved, I've came to each of, well, I haven't came to each of you individually, but I know you've all been talked to, you've been brought into the process, you've been asked about it. Sam Morocco is the only one that followed up with me after that last meeting and asked any questions. Terry, I saw you at the 4th of July event over at Clinton Wood, you said you had sent a message to Dan Kelly, I believe, and you were gonna follow up on that. No one has followed up with me on anything, except for Sam, who I heard from today because I was out of town for a few days. I am disappointed that none of you can reach out, well, not none of you, 'cause Jose did talk to me, although I must say Jose misled me, misrepresented things, and then has refused to talk to me since because I'm running against him. This is not getting business done. He's out knocking on doors and asking about what's going on, but you will not talk to me about issues that I've talked to you about, that you were supposed to provide me information for. I've asked for stuff in writing, nothing has been provided to me. No, no facts that were presented at a meeting by Mr. Keenan, no documents that were talked about and discussed. I've asked you to provide all that to me in writing, and the reasons you failed to give me permissions that everyone else gets, yet you refuse to do anything. So no, no one is following up with me doing things. The clerk, I've heard a lot of good things about the clerk's office, but I must say, during this process as an independent, I've seen a lot of information that was not known, we've had to work on things, and with so many departments, I've been given answers, being told that cannot happen, this will not happen. And at our last meeting, I said, please look into it before you tell me no, and make sure that's correct before you do this. I don't need warfights, or, or arguments, or be writing the state about complaints or anything else. I was finally reimbursed a hundred dollar check, but I was not told anything about why, what was found out about it, or anything else. I don't think that is good follow-up. I do appreciate you getting the check to me like was supposed to happen, but it did take time, and so often, I believe the answers are just given out before it's known, and it leads to confusion to all the residents regarding the ordinances and everything else. I am disappointed in all of you as a resident that I do not get the same privileges as probably 2,000 other residents in this that live on the lakes, and no one has been required to get a permission like you're requiring me. I do not know why you're not giving it to me, you have changed your ordinance, so, so it states what you've always done, not that I know that that's right or wrong, but you have changed your ordinance so docs do not require permits, yet you still refuse to give me that permission, releasing me of that court order so I can do it. I'm asking once again, please give me the permission to get rid of that court order so I can have the same privileges and everything else that I should be entitled to, just like ever other, every other taxpaying citizen. You speak of transparency, backroom deals, everything I see- You speak of transparency, backroom deals, everything I see seems to simulate that. Jose, you have done nothing to alleviate that. I have seen and heard more, as I'm out talking to residents, how upset people are, just like the lady who got up and spoke first, okay? There are signs out there, it's an ordinance, take it, all of you should get tickets. You know what? And then you can get the courts after you, and you can go through what you put your constituents through. But you don't. You are not fair, you are not consistent, and in my opinion, none of you deserve votes of anyone here. So if campaign violations, again, something else where people don't know the rules. Why don't we spend some time getting to know the rules? You have an attorney at every single meeting. Everything you do, you run by the attorney's office. It's not, I will look into something, we have to contact our attorneys to look into it, we have to contact our attorneys for this. As I said last meeting, I saw many of you wearing, it's proud to be right. You need to do right. If I'm ever in the position to do that, I think honesty and integrity is more important than anything you can do. And if you know of others that are doing wrong, someone needs to stand up and say something. Sam Morocco has stood up and said a lot. I can't say that I agree with everything he does, but at least he's standing up and saying something. The rest of you say nothing. Every time I come here, I get up and speak, no one says a word, you sit there. Yet you joke around with other people, and you bring up questions, and you talk about things. I am asking for an answer right now, when I can expect something in writing to either release me of that, or to tell me precisely why I am not being released for that permit, or lack of permit, or whatever the case is. Can I get an answer in a day, five days? I gave you 10 days back in April. You haven't done anything since. You continue to delay, put off, and not do a thing, Jose.
Yeah. Your timing is up. I give you extra time, too. Just for the board know, I asked Peter Keenan to give update to the other two, for elected officials, and they know what's going on. I actually meet with him and Keenan and try to help him as much, but he no wants to cooperate. I try, and there's exaggeration. If somebody wants to document something, I can provide it to you.
Did you say you sent us something?
Mr. Keenan indicated that he gave you a summary, so that you could summarize something this evening. Are you going to do that? Are you going to at least give him a summary? I think it's more important as well that the residents understand, because it doesn't look like we're doing anything.
No, we did. We did, but I cannot talk about litigation right now. But we, we met with Mr. Moore several times, with Peter Keenan, and we showed him a good fee and everything. He don't want to sign the documents and all that, that's the problem. But I cannot talk more about it, but I'm happy to meet with you again.
Why, are we in litigation?
We have, we have a case with him. Okay, but I don't want to talk about it, but...
We don't have a case with him that I'm aware of.
Please, please tell me what case you have with me. What litigation cases are?
We did have, but, okay. I'll make sure my office contact you as soon as, and we will talk about it. I cannot talk about anything like this in public.
So this is the transparency we can expect, correct? We ask questions, we can't get answers. I have had one meeting with you and Mr. Keenan.
Do you have a statement to read? From Keenan, or no?
I have sent him, but to chat with the board, that's all at this point. Thank you.
So am I clear that I'm not getting an answer tonight?
My office is going to reach out to you, and we're going to be doing this week with Peter Keenan.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you said.
I said we're going to meet with you and talk about this. We already talked to you, and you know, and I know.
Who's going to meet with me?
Myself and Peter Keenan.
I don't want to meet with Peter Keenan. He's an attorney, he doesn't need to be involved in this right now.
You know, and I know what's going on, and I already give update to the press and the clerk.
Well, no, I don't know that I do. That's why I asked for it in writing, so please inform me what's going on. Please inform everyone here and everyone that's watching. I'm open for it.
I will. I will.
Now?
Not now, but I'm going to meet with you this week. Okay? Thank you.
Can I have a timeline when I can hear from you?
Yeah, this week, for sure.
Quick?
This week, I will make sure that this week, okay?
I still do not think I'm getting an honest answer here, or a complete answer. So I will expect to hear from you this week. I expect the documents that I asked for. Peter Keenan said he had letters, transcripts, and everything else. You have failed to provide me any of that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Don Tillman, 7755 Newport. I got a question I want to ask Sam, and maybe he can help me on this. Sam, we got Myers coming in, you know that.
Yep.
Can you speak up, please?
Let me get it up a little higher. We got, like I say, we got Myers coming in, and some of the people have been calling me since I'm running for Township Supervisor. And their interest as that is, has there been any studies on traffic or anything for that before Myers comes in? Any traffic with M.DOT, or any studies of any sort? Do you know of?
I believe that there was, which was what warranted the county approving the traffic light here at Walden Center Drive. It would have had have been, the traffic study would have had have been done in order for the county to approve that light.
Do you think that we'll be able to handle the traffic with Myers going there? Do you really feel we can?
No, I think it's going to be more congested than it even is now, for sure.
Well, you know, take, for instance, like trucking coming in, delivering stuff and things like that, Pine Knob going, and stuff like that. I guess the situation is, is... Did we really feel we needed Myers put there? Was that a more thorough study? Would you, I mean, put it this way?
I mean, I'll talk to the point. I've been involved with it from the beginning, so I may not, let me go back a little bit. If it's okay with the supervisor to respond, if, you know, I'm happy to. Don't think I'm using that as a reason not to. So just so that people understand the story of it, there's part, when that, we rezoned that property multi-use in order to stop Walmarts and big box stores from coming into our township years ago. All the big parcels were rezoned multi-use. No business bigger than 75,000 square feet would be allowed in the township, except for a medical building. That's what the size of a Kroger is. So when people say, well, that's over there, well, that is multifamily, commercial, single family, all of that was part of the master plan to not have a Walmart and Lowe's be on that corner right there. That was by design of the township to control big industry and businesses coming here. The theory was, we want to have as good a services as we can for the residents, you know, but not be a draw for people to come here from other places, because the traffic was a problem. So I was in favor of that, and I stand behind how we did that in the township to keep big boxes. Now, the Myers is 50,000 square feet, which is, Kroger's is 75,000. It's even smaller than the one in Lake Orion, people make the connections. It's supposed to be a gourmet market. Now, I was not part of the Nino Savagio carrot dangling fiasco, and then the bait and switch on the retailer. But that's not, we're not allowed to talk about retailers. That's not our business on the Planning Commission or the board. We don't, we don't put money, you know, we don't, it's the use that we consider. That project, although in my opinion was very poorly done, and the density was too high, and it could have been way better with a park in the middle, and a community gathering space, and walkability, and all the things that I fought for, I'm not, I'm not going to say I didn't know that we were going to have multifamily, single-family, commercial as a multi-use development, and that was its intent. I think we poorly negotiated it, I think we gave away too much, and I was never in favor of cutting by the highway, or having it so close to the road. But when people say, did you vote for that? When I voted for the Myers, I voted for the commercial building that was always supposed to be there, the one building on the property that was commercial of size.
So you weren't for Myers?
There was no, Myers wasn't even in the discussion of a store. It was about a small, 50,000-square-foot retail gourmet-type space. Now, the Myers is 50,000 square feet, but the Planning Commission did mandate, and the board, that they had to put in a separate local retailer, coffee shop, some sort of other shop in that 50,000-square-foot. I wasn't in favor of them making the retailer provide the community amenity that I think they did to qualify for the PUD, which is the 20,000-square-foot patio that has to go there as a community space, where you could have food truck rallies and do stuff. And the task of putting those events together and making it more of a community space has been put on Myers, and they agreed to it, that retailer, to do it, you know? So it is not just a Myers, there's a 20,000-square-foot patio and entertainment and community gathering space that's adjacent to the Myers along with a separate retailer. So I think that a lot of that got lost, a lot of people don't understand the whole concept of it, so, you know, I've taken a hit for, oh, you voted for this, you know... Well, I voted for parts of it, and people have rights, and those parts were, parts that we were supposed to have. I was not in favor of how it was all done, but when it comes to the Myers, that's exactly what we planned to go, not Myers, but a small gourmet-style retailer in that multi-use property. Does that help answer the question?
Well, yeah, because there's a lot of people are concerned about this Myers.
Everybody's, I'm concerned about it, too.
You know, just like trying to come in here today, just with Pine Knob going. It's clustered already. Now, you got that going, plus schools when they're going, it's going to be a mess. And I just, a lot of people concerned, and I guess what I'm trying to get at is, what, how can we get out from underneath some of this? Different traffic flow, or different with M.DOT? Sit down and have meetings with them, or before this all starts? I mean, it's, I think we should start looking at it now.
I agree. It's above my participation pay grade that I get to participate in, but I would if I was able to. I think that we're lacking, we're lacking conversations with the county, we're lacking how we're getting some of that mass transit money back, we're lacking on, we're lacking on a lot of things that we need to push back on to get some help from the county and the Road Commission that we're not getting. That is, I believe that, but this is, you know, I don't want to keep...
Well, I understand, Sam, and my concern is, why do we got to wait till after it's built, and we got the problem, and we start working on this? Now is what I'm getting at. Do you agree?
I do, and I'm not well-versed enough to explain the whole process of the Road Commission.
I understand where you're at. I know exactly what process there is, but I mean, I think we should start on that now, and not wait till everything's built, and then we got a major problem. Then you're really going to get some complaints.
And that would be handled through the supervisor's office, which I would be happy to help with.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. We don't have public hearings, we don't have presentations, we don't have carryout postpones. Move to consent agenda. Request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular closed session meeting minutes on July 9, 2024. Two, request to approve the July 16, 2024 check run, including the ACH $1,361,887.85, and ratified the July 5, 2024 payroll of $460,105.97.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. This is about, we talked about this before, and then this, excuse the camera, oh, this is about, sure. Okay. So we are in the first item of the agenda, business agenda. You have, you can grab a copy right there of the agenda. You have the agenda with you? Yeah, but you have the agenda with you, so you can follow up with, okay, yeah, we are in, if you see in the back, it's a regular business, okay? Yeah. Thank you, Terry. So we in regular business, we are in request to approve the 2024 budget amendment, number 2022 resolution, number 2024, authorizing the repayment of the City of Village of Clarkston overpayment. So the City of Village, they have been working with us, and they find out there was some error in some of the services that we provide to them, we help them out, we are trying to be a good neighbor. So they overpaid in the, for around us, close to 10 years. So they brought that to our attention, and we worked with them, and then this contract was signed in 2010, so it was by previous administration, I believe, 2010. Sam, if you remember, it was day one there, 2010? Yeah, that was before Supervisor killed, because it came in 2012. So that was way before 2010. So they find an error, they have been overpaying in their property taxes, so we charge something we shouldn't be charging. So based on that, they brought to our attention, and now we would like to, you know, pay them back what we owe from fire and police services for the last six years. And this is the intention, it's a goodwill, and we try always to be a good neighbor, so the motion is about that. So if you see the motion, in 2010, the township and the City Village of Clarkston entered into an intergovernmental agreement for police and fire services for several years. Clarkston have paid in excess of the amount owned under the contract. The status of limitation for that, for a bridge of contract claim is six years, so we can go back over the past six years. Clarkston have overpaid in the amount of $87,302. Clarkston have request interest to be paid of the amount, in the amount of $8,918. Is any question for our members? Paul?
Yeah, come on. I think we should share a little bit more about what happened, why there was a mistake. And I also think that we'll need to address, I think likely, a new contract. The original contract, again, from 2010, had them paying millages on real property and not personal property. So, and again, personal property would be business-related assets within the community, and there are taxes on those. We have that here in the township, they have it in the village. For some reason, they decided to exclude those in applying the millage rates to collect money for police and fire services in the village. My opinion is, that shouldn't have been that way, because that means they're paying at a lower rate than our residents do. Because our residents and taxpayers here pay the millage rate against both personal and real property. They excluded it in the contract, and it is what it is. So we did overcharge them, because we were charging them based on both categories, not just the real property. Okay? That's why there was a mistake. To me, there's another piece of this that's missing. The contract never addressed the fact that in addition to police and fire services, there are other departments paid for by the general fund that help do things for the police and fire, especially fire. We pay invoices, pay their bills, you have departments that support payroll and human resources, and so there really should be an administrative fee on top of the rate they pay, which means they would pay a little bit more than our residents do for police and fire services, not significantly more, but it would be more fair, because our residents are paying for the police and fire millage, they're also paying for the administrative services that support it. And I think that it makes sense, and I think we need to discuss that with the village. I do support paying the six-year back, look back on this. Legally, they would have no issues collecting that. We did the same thing as the township in collecting prior utility bills back in 2018 that were owed to us, and we collected six years. And we didn't go to court to do it, because everyone really kind of knows you can do that when it comes to public utilities, so. I think the context was important, and that's how we got where we're at. Sam?
I just want to go on the record, I wasn't at the last closed session meeting, because I wasn't able to be here, but I was at the first one. So the village of Clarkston paid us too much money over a period of 14 years. According to the courts, what everyone's saying is that if we, if they sued us, they could recover six years of the 14 years. could recover six years of the 14 years. My problem with it is they overpaid us 14 years of payments. It's, we're not disputing that we took all their money and that we made interest on it and we haven't. What I struggle with is why don't we, why wouldn't we give the money back that we overcharged them because they're our neighbor? They're, you know, I don't like the idea that we're trying to find a loophole, how to only pay them back half the money that, that they paid into us. You know, they're a struggling city. We're not. That's a lot of money to them. They could do a lot of infrastructure. I just, you know, I don't, I don't do business that way. So I would make, I would, I would like to give them back all their money and we keep all the interest we made off of all their money. That can be our little nugget we get for our administration of it. And then, it's about two quarters. If we were to pay them back everything that they overpaid us and we didn't charge them for the next two quarters of police and fire, we would be pretty much square with them. So that's a lot of money. I can't ask, take questions. But I just, you know, everyone's, I'm not a government guy. I'm a business guy. And you over, if you give me too much money and I don't dispute it, I give you your money back. That's, you know, so some residents would want to have us keep the money because, you know, they want us to. I'm just not in favor of it. I think we should, I think we should give them back all their money and I would do it as a form of a credit for services, future services. And that's the cleaner way to do it and then we don't have to amend the budget or maybe we will later, but I don't know all the legal parts of it. But I didn't get a chance to voice my opinion in the last meeting because I wasn't here. So I'm doing it now because it's, it's now or never. So I'm not in favor of, of the settlement. That's, that's, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Terry?
I have a quick question. I guess it would be for Dan. It didn't have to be now or never because you really could have asked for this to be postponed if you didn't want to vote today. But my question is, to talk about what just happened now, I mean, discussions in a closed session now because he couldn't be there, I'm just, I'm confused.
I'm not saying what we talked about in a closed session. I'm saying this is what you guys came up with to, as the agreement. I'm not saying what we.
Yeah, I don't think he went too far. I think he noted the closed session and we discussed it, which, but I don't think he talked about the closed session. He's expressing his opinion as to the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't trying to call you out. I'm just trying to cover ourselves.
No, I appreciate it. I'm good. I've tried to be, step, walk the line.
Yeah, no, Carrie.
I just think it's important, maybe Dan can give us, fill us in on this, that the village city has met on this as well. And I believe their commission has come to an agreement. So I think that that needs to be stated in this picture as well. And maybe Dan or.
That's my understanding. I think they're here as well. But yes, my understanding is that they passed approval of this settlement for the 96, 200,000 two weeks ago. It's my understanding.
Okay. I just think that's an important piece that needs to be put into this picture, so.
Right.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add a little perspective or context as well because, again, context does matter. I'm much, I'm much looser with my personal funds than I am with township funds. And I think one of the points of discussion, we all value the relationship, the close bond that we share with the city, the village of Clarkston. There's no question, right? Many of us, when we're outside of the township walls, we say we're from Clarkston, right? We, we wear it hard on our sleeve. We love our city. So for me, this isn't about the, you know, the 14 years as much as it is in a very unemotional way and removing myself from the emotional part of this, the personal piece of this, is what, what would township residents expect? And that is, if we were in this, if we were on the receiving end of this, the odds are in a court or through advice of a council, we would be, we would be receiving what the statutory limit is in that six years. So in simple terms, because it's not my money and I don't feel that I'm liberated, I haven't heard from all 37,000 of you, I don't feel liberated to go beyond the statutory requirement to reimburse for the six years. My personal, my personal position on this is that we, we pay the, the city of the village the six years that were, that they are entitled by statute and, you know, chalk this up as an error somewhere in the process on both sides. So that's, that's the context that I'm looking through, the lens I'm looking through is this isn't Jim Tetter's money. This is the township money. I want to pay what we're obliged to pay. And I apologize that this happened, but I don't know that it's the best use of township funds to just pay obligations beyond what we're statutorily required to pay.
Paul?
The only other piece, and I'm, I'm obviously not a lawyer, would be setting a precedent that someone could use against us in the future for who knows how much money in a similar situation. And so when you get away from the rules or the laws that are applied and try to do what in your heart you believe is the right thing, it will get used against you if it benefits somebody else at some point in time. And so I do think it's important to try to follow those rules for that reason.
Sam?
Just a final comment.
Sure.
Trying to wrap my head around it, but the, I know, you know, I take, understand your point from the township. I don't work like that, but you know, that you're, this is based upon as if we're a family and we're suing our own family and this is all that the court's gonna give us back, you know, allow us to get paid. It's, it's, I mean, it's, it's, the, the example used of people that didn't pay us for 30 years and we collected their money, that's different. They owed that money and we got to collect a certain amount. We didn't even get to collect all our money. We only by statute, you know, statute, we got to collect six years of our debt. That's not, that's nothing to do with what we're talking about. Nobody owes us money. They gave us a bunch of extra money and we're keeping it because if they sue us, the courts will hold us to that level. Well, what if they don't sue us? What if your family don't sue your family? You know, it just, that's, there's two, those are two different examples. You know, we're not owed, we're not trying to recover lost funds. They're trying to recover lost funds because of a clerical error that we never caught, they never caught. They're taking the grunt of it. They're taking the hit, you know? And that's a, you know, that's a lot, it's, it's a, it's a lot of money to them, you know? And I just think it's, I just think it's different. And I don't know what precedent we would set by having to give back money that we got overpaid, you know? I, I don't know if that sets precedence, but I do think that there's an extreme difference between us trying to recover lost funds and us trying to refund extra money that we got. I think there's a fundamental difference of those two things, you know?
Okay. Let's, anyone else? Jonathan? Jonathan for the village is the representative?
Hello, Jonathan Smith, the city manager of the city of Clarkston. I have copies of, of my comments I'd like to hand out. Is that okay to give you copies of that?
Sure.
In 2010, the city voted to contract with Independence Township for police and fire services. The agreement states that Clarkston shall pay the township an annual amount calculated by multiplying the real property tax value by the number of mills the township charges its residents for police and fire, the same millage rate. The township calculates the, the quarterly charges and they send us an invoice. And, and the city has no backup detail. So here's, here's a copy of that invoice. This is for the first quarter. It says first quarter and it's got an amount, 40, 47,000 dollars for fire and 48, 40,000 for police. That's all the detail that's on this invoice. There are, there's no detail. I know that you've said several times, well, the town, or the city screwed up here too. They, they missed this. No, we didn't. We didn't have your millage rates. We didn't know this. So unless we came to the township and asked, what are the millage rates you're charging in your township? And then we go back and we could have done that, but this invoice comes from you. In 2024, a resident who was on the city council in 2010, one of our city council members who was on the council at the time this new contract was approved, notified the city that the, that the township may be including personal property values in the calculation, not just the real property values per the contract. Upon notifying the township of this discrepancy, the township's own analysis confirmed that they had correct, incorrectly included personal property values in their calculations over the, the past 14 years for a total of $171,800. On March of 2025, this March, I sent Jose this letter and I asked for the full amount back. This is a huge amount for the city to overpay. Granted, it was over 14 years, but 171,000 represents almost 20% of our annual budget. That's huge for us. We're scrambling to, to, you know, make the, the payments at the end of the year and so $171,000 is a lot of money to us. So I submit, I sent this letter on March 25th. Subsequent negotiations between the city and the township attorney resulted in a proposed settlement of $87,000 for the six-year statute of limitation period, but the city continues to seek full restitution. Make no mistake about it, we need this money. We, we've negotiated this six-year statute of limitations, but we don't agree with it. And this is a lot of money for us to, just to walk away from. We have been neighbors and partners with, with the township. We ask that you do the right thing. Put the statute of limitations aside. Don't use that as a shield. Put that aside and do the right thing. Reimburse the city for the full $171,800 overpayment. We contracted with the township and we paid the quarterly invoices in good faith. We now ask that you please reimburse us in that same good faith.
Thank you. Paul?
I, I certainly get that. I'm in the same position Sam is. If this was me personally, we, we wouldn't be in a conversation. I'd, yeah, I'd give the money back immediately. But for me, I, I have to go back to the original contract. Why, why is the village not paying the millage rate against their personal property? All of our taxpayers have to pay the rate against personal property. So they're, what they're asking for back is money that, had I done that contract, I have no idea how they could possibly have set that contract up to not make them pay the taxes on the personal property. The personal property has to pay taxes. Why was the millage rate and police rate not applied to the personal property? Because our taxpayers had to pay that part, which means the village taxpayers, if we give the money back, will have for the last 14 years paid an effective rate lower than our residents. And we have a responsibility to our residents. And so I get it, there was a contract, but if we're saying we're being neighborly, wouldn't the right thing to do say, okay, well, the contract was messed up also? Because I can think of no reason why it would get excluded. And so that puts me in a position to say, I gotta do what would be right for our residents. I can't go back 14 years, but why was that excluded? Makes no sense. Every community in the state pays fire and police millage rates against personal property tax, but they didn't charge the village that. And that's unfair to our residents because those two funds are funded by that rate, which means if more money is needed, we're in a, we're in a worse position now by giving back that money than we would have been if the contract had been right in the first place. And that's what I think about.
Okay. Ron?
I, I, just to piggyback on what you just said, Paul, is like basically the, you know, I guess we felt we weren't overcharging. We felt we were charging the same rate that we were supposed to charge, just like to our residents to the city. And, but when it was brought to us and we looked at the legality of the, of the way the contract was written, it's just poorly worded to not include the same exact payment that, that the township is making. So, so, I guess, so, in my mind, that's why I'm in favor of paying the statutory amount. It's like, we thought they should have paid that amount. It wasn't, wasn't, we didn't think we were overcharging them, but it's just a, a misstatement of the, the contract. And so that's why I'm in favor of paying the statutory amount and that's it, so.
Okay. Somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution number 2024-017 of the Board of Trustees authorizing payment to the city of the village of Clarkston in the amount of $96,220 to resolve the issue of overpayment to the 2010 contract for police and fire services.
Support.
Okay. Israel, Rocko, Carrie?
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
No.
Trustee Alan Othu?
Yes.
Trustee Richie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This motion be?
I'll move to approve the 2024 budget amendment number 22 as presented.
Support.
Okay. Rocko?
Simple majority.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Adam? Please? Adam Klein or Parks and Recreation Director?
Good evening. Before you come, request the approval of the resolution 2024-15, authorize township supervisory assign the amendments to the park, to the project entitled Bay Court Park. And just for a little history, you purchased this park in 1987 with some grant-assisted funds from the M.N.R.T.F. When you do that, you purchase park property and encumbers that property for recreational purposes only. In 2008, you went and built Department of Public Works pump station on that property to service the residents of southeastern portion of the township. But when we do that, the, the state considered that a conversion. So we have to mitigate that conversion. You guys did that. You purchased some property that was adjacent to Bay Court Park, included that, it was like 1.5 acres. So we sent a request to the state to say, okay, we've purchased this. Can we mitigate that conversion? So this is just the resolution to do exactly that, is to mitigate that conversion of the park or the pump station.
Any questions from board members?
No.
Ron? Yes.
Yeah. Part of why we had to mitigate is, like you stated, we put the pump station in.
Right.
So it took up some of that land.
Correct.
So they negated that out of the thing. So we're mitigating it. So the portion that we, we added on and we, we purchased the property alongside there that comes out to Parview Road.
Correct.
I just noticed since we just put water down the whole length of Parview, we actually put a pipe through that property back to the well.
It's underground.
Okay. I guess what I'm gonna ask, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's the difference. They don't consider that a conversion.
We went on the property, buried this pipe on there. So I just want to make sure that you're stating that there's no way that the intrusion of this water main going into the pump station doesn't negate the mitigation.
Correct.
So, because it's all underground, there's no.
They don't consider that a conversion. It still opens.
Okay. So the whole, the whole 1.5 acres helps to mitigate now, not, we don't have to take out for any area that the pipe is, is under.
Correct. They're, they're, with the, that 1.5, the. There, there, with the, that 1.5, the, there was some extra, um, mitigation, uh, room. Um, but, so we have that to use if we have another conversion. But currently, we don't have any other conversions.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't violating the mitigation before we even get it approved.
They know about it.
Good question.
Take it, Adam.
It does not.
Anyone else?
I got a quick question.
Sure.
So Adam, does that mean that if we do the, uh, new, the new garage, that, that's not gonna put us in, uh, in?
Correct.
In the rears? Cause we got a little bit of extra fluff with this property?
Well, no, they don't consider that a conversion either because that would be, it's a maintenance building for the.
Parks and Rec? Okay. I just wanna make sure that's, so we can still move forward with that at some point in time. Okay.
Okay.
I just brought up the, I wanted to bring up the part about the water because since the pump station was the main reason for the, uh, conversion, I want to make sure that the, the big pipe we just put there isn't negating some of that as well, so.
Yeah. Do you want to? Okay. Anyone would like to make a motion?
You want to?
Anyone from the public would like to address this item? No?
All right. I'll move to adopt resolution number 2024 dash zero one five to approve the project agreement amendments to unencumber 0.57 acres of property and restrict 1.5 acres of property under a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant. Authorize the township supervisor to execute all documents necessary to complete the land conversion.
Support. Okay. Rocco?
Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothe?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. The motion carried.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank, Adam, stay there. I think you're next up. Yep. You want Rick?
I think I'm gonna present the next one also.
Yeah, okay.
Why didn't you just move back there?
Adam.
Okay.
So I'm here to request, um, approve the budget amendment, uh, 23 prepayment of the Oakland McComb Interceptor Drainage District 2024 Drain Assessment known as Special Assessment Role Number One and adopt the resolution 2024 dash zero one six for the same. So a little history on this is that Independence Township was notified by Oakland County Water Resources Commission that they are going to make some improvements to the Oakland McComb Interceptor Drain District, uh, to the tune of about 11.4 million. So they sent us our portion of that, um, bill or what could be a bill. They are allowing us a prepayment, uh, option to the, the, what's it, two, the, two hundred and sixty nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars. And that would be the prepayment if we choose not to prepay. Um, that's a 4% interest over 20 years, uh, and that comes out to be 1,000 or, I'm sorry, 100,000, 34, 818. So by prepaying, you're saving that, that amount of money. And Rick has done the numbers. Uh, he's talked to, to me and we have that money, um, and he's recommended that we do move forward with the prepayment.
So that way we will, uh, save 4% of interest over the next 20 years, right? Which is 134,000, 818 dollars.
Correct.
Yeah. If we don't do that, then we're gonna be paying 4% interest in the next 20 years. So, Paul?
Um, you know, I did look that, I did look at this with Rick and it's really, it's a delta. It's not 4% that we're saving. Um, it's the delta between our, our, what we could get with that money if we went and invested it. And, and initially it looks like, well, I can go get 5% right now. I'm getting 5% all day long. So we'd actually be 1% better, but interest rates aren't gonna stay where they're at. We know they're gonna come down, they're gonna drop below 4%. And so, so the difference is fairly narrow from an actual dollar perspective, but when you consider the small amount of this and then the administrative costs of, you know, processing the payment every year or twice a year, uh, it, it made sense because it's so small to take care of it and get rid of it. And the benefit financially on the interest rates is gonna be fairly negligible over the, over the 20-year period, so.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Anyone from the public? No? Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve prepayment of the Oakland McComb Drainage District Series 2024, 2024 Issue Bond known as Special Assessment Role Number One in the amount of 269,733 dollars for Independence Township and adopt resolution number 2024 dash zero one six as presented.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Excuse me?
Is Rocco?
Yes, it is. Oh, it says majority. Well, that's, that's an error.
Okay.
It is a resolution, so.
Okay.
Uh, Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Trustee Alamothe?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. And Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Motion B.
Move to approve 2024 Budget Amendment Number 23 as presented.
Second. Okay.
That's simple majority.
Simple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. The last one. So as you, as you know.
This is for the budget amendment that we moved?
Oh, the budget amendment. Yes, right. We have, uh, we amended something. Carrie?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be you now?
We have two more. Rick's got.
Two more? Okay.
This is Rick Yager to request, request to approve 2024 Budget Amendment Number 24. Good evening.
Hi.
Um, this budget amendment has to do with the, uh, back on July 9th, last meeting, uh, the board approved the purchase of land at, uh, 54, 58, 54 Dixie Highway. Um, everything was done properly as far as I'm aware. We're just trying to close the transaction here. However, there was no budget amendment done. I mean, we have the funds, they just aren't in the right place. Uh, so we need to move some stuff around here to make this happen and that's what this budget amendment is all about.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 Budget Amendment Number 24 as presented.
Support. Go ahead, Sam.
He's good.
Sure, Adam.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Thank you.
Now we, we okay, right?
Sure show.
Thank you.
You're out.
Okay. Um, I bring the request to approve a forensic financial audit for a key township operation areas. The reason I doing this is it brought, um, a former employee in the last meeting brought a concern. And then a lot of residents that were in the last meeting were, you know, asking, and then when I, asking questions and when I left the room, people were still asking questions and during the last week, the week previously, people were asking me about what's going on and quite frankly, I think that everything is right. I, we have a great people, but, uh, lately a lot of people has, uh, the idea that something is wrong. Now we just find out the village. They didn't bid correctly and we, we were over collecting money. I don't, and that was 10 years ago. I took office a year and a half ago. Probably most of you don't know, but when I got in my office, I went to look my desk and everything. I didn't find any documents or nothing. The last previous supervisor never came to me and told me where we at, wasn't any transition in the, in the right way. Um, I met with the previous supervisors a couple of times. When I went to my desk, I looked for documents, it wasn't nothing there. It was everything empty. Then in the last year and a half, I can see I got legal opinions, I have documents, I have, like, right now I have a lot of data going on. So anyways, um, I wanna do this just because I went, in the name of transparency and also because I believe it would be okay for a lot of people that has a concerns in our community that something is not right. And since today, you see a good example with the village, that we, that we were over collecting money. I don't know if that's the only error. Maybe not. I don't know, but I think if we do this, it's gonna bring a lot, not just transparency, but it's gonna bring, um, you know, show the people that we are acting in goodwill and I think that's the right thing to do. I just requesting just to, to check some, some of the things from the last, uh, financial report and I acting in good faith and not try to fight with anybody or anything. So, does anyone have a question?
Paul?
Um, and I've got some, I'm gonna go up because I've got some visual things that I need to show the board.
Sure.
Um. Okay. So we, we have a CPA firm that audited our financial statements. We have that every year and, and they're not here. And so there's a lot of information that needs to be talked about within what this request is. And I'm a CPA, so I fed a, I felt a bit of an obligation. So I'm licensed to the state of Michigan. I'm a member of the AICPA, the Michigan Institute of Certified Public Accountants, and I've been licensed for more than 20 years. I want people to understand what we're talking about here and I certainly have some concerns when people bring up the term forensic audit because, because there's certain connotation to that just based on how the term is used in the field. Let's start by this up here and I put this together so that the board as well as the public could have an, I think, a better understanding of what we're talking about and what decision the board needs to make relative to what issues are out there that need to be looked at. First of all, the difference between financial accountants and forensic accountants. Financial accountants are CPAs who focus on determining the accuracy of financial statements. Their job is to issue opinions as to the accuracy of the statements based on specific criteria issued by GASB, Governmental Accounting Standard Board. A lot of people have heard of GAAP. GASB is like GAAP, but for government entities, cause there's different rules than the private sector follows. Forensic accountants are CPAs who have specific training needed to investigate areas of concern that arise based in part on specific issues that have been identified as concerns. Their work is often used in both criminal and civil litigation. When are forensic accountants typically hired? There's a, there's about six reasons here. Um, when employees, when employee theft has been identified, when financial records appear to be inaccurate, when shareholder disputes exist. That's private, a private sector issue. And again, if you Google these things, you can come up with a lot of this information. Lots of firms put this out, the AICPA puts it out. Um, the planned sale of your business, again, private sector. You would hire a forensic auditor to make sure your values, evaluations are right. As part of divorce proceedings to determine estate values. A lot of divorce happens and there's a lot of times fights over money. Forensic accountants go in and figure things out. When facing an IRS tax audit, again, private sector, we don't, we don't pay taxes. Okay? So it's really the first two areas that would likely result in us saying, we need a forensic accountant. How much do forensic accountants charge? Another concern on, on the agenda item is there's no budget. So the board will be voting, I don't know how much money would be spent, but based on the list of things that were presented, it will be more money than we would owe the village if we paid them all the money back. Forensic accountants will not present us with a not to exceed bill. We can't put this out to bid and say, how much will you charge us to do the whole thing? No one will bid on it because they don't know what they're gonna find when they get in there. Forensic accountants start at 300, 350 and go up to 450 per hour. We hired one here six or eight years ago. I mentioned that a little bit later and that was the rate. I did speak with our auditor and I asked him the rate and he said, yeah, 400, 450. They're not sending out low intern or lower level people to do this work. This is very important work when you call this to be taken, to take place. Um, so as the present, as the presentation listed, here's what was requested. Identify discrepancies. The first, the purpose of our annual financial audit is to determine the accuracy of our financial statements. Our auditors have issued unmodified opinions on the accuracy of our financial statement and that's, that's gone on since I've been here. Unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance auditors give. There is nothing higher. This is, we've had three different auditors in Independence Township in the last 12 years. We have a brand new one this past year. They've all issued unmodified opinions. I'm gonna grab my water. Been talking too much. Inefficiencies. Neither financial nor forensic accountants provide guidance on management processes or how to fix them. Our financial auditors routinely look at internal controls and they provide opinions as to whether there are issues, but they do not tell us how to fix them. This would impact their independence. As a CPA, when you go out and you do an audit, you have to be independent from the organization or auditing. By giving management advice, they would not be independent and they would never provide that advice. They can tell us, this looks like it's not, oh, there's an internal control problem here. In fact, if you go back through our audits going back multiple years, every year they seem to pick one thing and say, from an internal control standpoint, you should look at this. Right? They bring those things up, they report them to the board and we tend to take some action in our processes to resolve those concerns every year. They would never tell us how to do it and they would not come in and tell us what is inefficient and not efficient because that's a management practice. You could find someone to do that, it just wouldn't be a forensic auditor or our auditors, the financial auditors. Provide transparency is the next item. The first one's water and sewer building. The board's already authorized an RFP to hire an outside consultant to evaluate our REU rates as well as water connection concerns. The inaccuracies, inaccuracies that were identified that need to be investigated are not financial. While they have a financial impact, they're not financial. They're operational. I actually spoke to our auditors prior to bringing the motion to request that we go out and find a consultant to look at this. I asked them, do you audit REUs? They said, no, we would never do that. So you, that's not gonna take place using, using a forensic auditor. No accountant would do it. It involves, it involves how our ordinances are being applied when setting REUs for commercial businesses. Payroll, vacation and other paid time off versus HR allowances. I really have no information on this area. It doesn't fall within the treasurer's area. I don't participate in it other than my own payroll information. Um, but I'm also not aware of any issues that have been reported. Nothing's been brought to my attention. Overtime. Overtime discrepancies would be evaluated by a forensic accountant. And as I mentioned earlier, the township utilized this action six or eight years ago to investigate a very narrow concern regarding several employees and the possibility that they were putting in too much overtime on their time cards. We brought in one person from our accounting firm who specialized in forensic, uh, accounting and, and was over 300 dollars an hour and told them, that's what you're looking at. He went and looked, he found no problems. So when it comes to that, if there's some issue that's known, yes, you would bring in a forensic accountant for that. Taxes received versus taxes distributed to taxing authorities. And in case people haven't read the agenda, each of these bullet points is listed in the agenda as one of the things that we're asking to go evaluate. Okay? Taxes received versus taxes distributed to the taxing authority. My question is, has the supervisors, the township's chief assessor discussed his concerns with the Oakland County Treasurers Office of Settlement and Distribution? The county treasurer has full oversight of the entire taxing and collection process. They manage this responsibility for every city and township in Oakland County. I think it's easier to look at this than to just say it to you, so I'm gonna pop this open and probably. open and probably try to blow it up a little bit. I know it's a lot of numbers. This is a certificate, let me just make it a little bit bigger. So, the tax process starts when our millage rates are put into our ERP system and it's based on having what's called an L4209. And those documents come from each taxing authority and they tell us what millage rate we, they want us to put on our tax bills. We do one, the county does one, the school districts do one. That tells us the rate and we put those into our ERP system. Okay? We back up our ERP system to the county, the treasurer, the treasurer's part of it. We back it up to Oakland County every two weeks, all year long. They are constantly looking at it to make sure our numbers are right relative to how we're billing for taxes. The assessor prepares this certification by assessing officer, authenticating the tax rule. This includes all the taxable values, adjustments that get made relative to the board of review, there's two different board of reviews that happen. And ultimately this, and again, I'm not gonna try to go through this whole document, but this tells us how much, how many taxes we should levy. I know the exact number that all my tax bills should add up to before I mail them out. And I don't mail them out till Oakland County says, we got all the paperwork, we've looked at your stuff, everything's right, go ahead and do your, send out your tax bills. So, that's the beginning of it, is sending out tax bills. Because again, what we're talking about is tax, tax, taxes I charge and then how I distribute them. At the end of the year, this, this document gets initially presented to, through the township by the county treasurer's office. It's my settlement work papers. So, the Oakland County sends me a document, it's Excel, and it's got all the amounts that are on the, on the warrant that was issued, the totals we're supposed to be collecting. We populate that with interest that gets paid in on delinquent taxes that we've collected and we, we filter it down to have all the information relative to what's going delinquent and being turned over to the county. And then we get down to the end and it also shows everything we've already paid out, because we pay out money every two weeks. It gets to the end and we have to be in balance. Now, we do all this work and a bunch of, a bunch of paperwork that goes with it, we send it to the, to the county treasurer's office, Office of Settlement and Distribution. They got a whole team over there. And they go through everything and they always find something that isn't right. Well, I mean, here, there are some communities I'm sure that have had times where it was perfect the first time and it's just not normal. Especially when you have a lot of corridor improvement authorities and DDAs. Because those calculate in a weird way that the rounding doesn't work right. Of course, I'm told this by the Oakland County Treasurer's office. Why are we off? It's the, it's the DDAs. They never come out right, we gotta round it, whatever. At the end of the day, until the county treasurer says, we've completed your settlement and you're tied out, we can't close the books. So, all this work between our office and the treasurer's office at Oakland County, that's, that's the evaluation of taxes collected and paid. It's already been done. So, if there's gonna be a forensic audit on this, we're gonna have to call Oakland County and tell them we wanna do one on them, because they do this. It's not, it's not the Wild West out there. There are a lot of internal controls in place, government controls in place. Sometimes this stuff gets a little bit expensive, because you've got so many different parties doing the same work. Right? We gotta pay a lot of taxes to the county, you gotta pay taxes to us. But at the end of the day, it's a pretty important process to make sure it's done correct for every community. And so, I think it works correctly. Okay, overpayments and underpayments. Again, this came right after taxing, so I'm assuming we're talking about overpayments of taxes and underpayments of taxes. Relative to underpayments of taxes, if you underpay your taxes, you go delinquent and we turn it over to Oakland County. Oakland County gives us the money, the township's whole, and then the county goes and collects it. Overpayments, that's, that's another thing. So, let me, let me jump to this. Overpayments happen on a regular basis. Duplicate payments really are the biggest issue. They get paid twice. We have a very robust process for making sure these are correctly handled. So, this is our worksheet from 2023. I've blacked out the names because I don't think it matters who the taxpayers were. You can have a lot of different situations here. That first one, taxes got paid in $11,000. The same taxpayers wrote another check for $11,000. Part of our process is to, I require this sheet to be filled out, which, which provides the date things happened, the amounts that were paid. Both checks, both payments that happened. We evaluate what the overpayment is, we do an explanation of whatever information we can gather on why it happened and what happened. And then we determine who gets the refund. Now, if it's the same taxpayer, we're just gonna send it to the taxpayer. In most cases, we try, we try to do these as ACHs. So, we're not writing checks that get lost and don't get cashed. We evaluate every one of these independently. Now, if there's been, we also look to see, has there been a property transfer? If there's been a property transfer, that's a different ballgame. Typically, what will happen is, we'll get a check from a taxpayer and we'll get a check from a title company. The rules on this changed some years back. It used to be treasurer's office kept the first payment they got, no matter who paid it. And that was an opinion from the state tax department saying, this is how you do it. You keep the first payment. Your neighbor paid your taxes by mistake, you gotta keep his payment. They actually did that. You gotta talk to your neighbor to get the money back. They changed it, they said, it's really a discretion of the treasurer to determine what's the right solution. So, you have a situation where there's a title company and a homeowner who paid. I assume a title company knew what they were doing when they split up the taxes, however they did it, and paid us the taxes. We refund the other payment 99% of the time when that situation exists. That's really the big difference between those two, but every single one is evaluated. Now, to get them paid, we present copies of the checks to the finance department along with a document that says, we're gonna do an ACH to refund this money to these people. Here's an explanation of what happened. Here's both the checks. Here's the, the routing and ACH numbers we're going to use. Finance department can then evaluate those. My, my deputy puts in the payment in the banking system, the finance department releases it. Once they've evaluated it and said it's good to go. So, I think it's important to understand what happens with overpayments and that there's a very, very strong process to make sure they're properly, properly handled and get back to the people who are supposed to get them. As you can see, there's lots of them. Okay? Lots. And so, there's, we, we take the time to do this right. It takes time, but it's a pretty important thing. Because if you miss one of these and get it wrong, residents are gonna come in and say, where'd my money go? It's a duplicate payment, where's it at? That's why it's so critical that we have this right every time. Because otherwise, there'll be an appearance that, well, we're just gonna what? Keep it? Not a chance. So, we always identify these and get them done correctly. Missing deposits and lost cash. Um, I, I'm assuming you, you haven't, but the treasurer's financial reports, deposits over and short is a line item on my financial statements. This is another one of the documents where the assessor has to provide me a certification on, on the total taxable values of, of the township. So, part of that process. All right, so here this is. And I went ahead and ran this and kept the line open for deposits over and short, which you see here. This goes back to 2010. So, it's kind of an interesting story here. Some people might say, well, why is it always perfect in 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013? I came in in 2013 and tried to learn as much as I could. Didn't change everything right away, I changed some things. They weren't perfect in 2010, 11, 12 and 13. There was a solo cup in the safe with money in it. Anybody who works a place with a cash drawer, this will kinda, you'll remember, in some places, that's what they did. So, there's a, there's a solo cup, what's this money for? There's like $75 in there and a bunch of change, ones, fives, tens. Said, that's over short. I said, what do you mean? Well, if we're over, we put it in there and if we're short, we take it out. And that's why they're always zero. And I said, we can't do it that way. You're over, you're over, you're short, you're short. And we reported every single day into the financial statements. Now, if there were missing deposits, those show up here. There's never been a missing deposit in my 12 years here. We do have overs and shorts. And there's actually an internal control problem in the treasurer's office that I identified, I don't know, eight years ago to our auditors, because I said, really, I've got two cash drawers, one for general and one for tax. Okay? And we have two computers, because they've gotta be separate. Three of us go into those drawers. How am I supposed to have a, you know, control over, you know, who made a mistake? All three of us go into both drawers regularly during the day. I've only got myself and two, two people. But I don't have the real estate to have six drawers and six computers. And, and, and so, in my opinion, and I shared that with auditors back in the day, was, I'm willing to take that level of risk versus where am I gonna put all the drawers we need to have these all tied up? Not to mention, I probably gotta add some staff, because now I've gotta balance all those drawers every night. Right? And right now, I use less staff in the treasurer's office than we did 20 years ago. 20 years ago, they had three full-time and one 30-hour part-time. I haven't used a part-time person since I got elected. And we do more work, but we do it because of automated processes. Now, in the case of this one, if you look out, the net of our overage and underages over the last, you know, 10 years, the black numbers mean we, we are short. That's an expense. And I, I remember that in most cases, this is, again, it's over the course of the year, so it could be five bucks, a dollar, 95 cents, whatever. There were a couple of times where we had deposits at the bank that were short $100. I mean, we, we went after the bank, said like, we know what we put in, we know we got it right. And, you know, that problem, we don't, we don't take, it was generally when we took the deposit to the bank and put it in the night drop. We don't do that anymore. In fact, we don't even take deposits to the bank. We have a courier service pick them up, because we don't want employees at risk carrying that money. So, we haven't had that problem again since around 17 or 18. Believe it or not, in the last four years, we actually were over. We were over $42 in 2020, we were, you know, plus 64, plus 80. The plus 124 last year, we had one day where we balanced the drawer and it was 100, exactly $170 over. We could not figure out where the money came from. I, I went to the cameras, I had a look at the cameras, trying to, I have a camera, by the way, stationed right over the treasurer's counter. Okay? And it records every transaction that happens. Most of the time, we're using it because checks get lost on our side of it. Like, one time it got thrown into the trash can instead of the stuff, right? Of course, we looked in the camera and saw it. One time, we gave the check back to the resident. And, and we stapled it to the receipt and gave it to them. Right? But we saw it in the camera and we got it. Most of the time, the overs and shortages, we looked very hard for the 170. At some point, we said, look, we're over. Let's record it. If a resident comes in and says, I think I gave you guys too much money, this is another reason why this is important. If I say to the resident, oh, it's in the safe, here, here's a pile of money for you, that's not good, because that just sounds like we might just keep it ourselves, who knows? But when I can show the resident, I can't give it to you right now, because we deposited it and marked it up as an overage. That's what residents wanna hear from us, is that we handled it right every time. We never did find out where the 170 came from. Year-to-date right now for 2024, we're plus 20 cents. Now, I will also share that over the last four years, that's seven different employees in the treasurer's office. So, there's been some turnover. And I don't think that helps. You get someone longevity, I think the, the overage and underage will go down, because we get better at our jobs when we do it longer. So, that's the, the question regarding missing deposits or cash. It's all here and not sure what we would need to investigate. Excuse me. Reconciliations are done on every single balance sheet account the township has annually. Like, we've got documentation that shows how did we get from A to B, and the auditors wanna see that, reconciliations are done and the auditors review all of it. There are also, reconciliations are also done on a lot of revenue and expense accounts as well. However, if this is referencing to bank reconciliations, which is something that's been brought up a couple of times, it was actually noted in the financial, in our financial auditor's financial report. Bank reconciliations were not completed in a timely manner due to difficulties reconciling the batch imports of utility payments with the actual occurrence of the deposits from the third-party vendors. I didn't put it in here, but I wanna explain that. For a long time, everyone came in with checks and cash and we, we collected it. We made a real hard push 12 years ago to start getting automated payments. Our automated payment right around the due date of our, of our utility bills, you know, starting in last year's third quarter, was $400,000 and 2,000 payments. And one-day batch of transactions. And our problem is, we would always take that batch of data, 2,000 of them, we know who they are, and we can import that into our ERP system. Okay? Used to be easy, because there wasn't that much. But the money doesn't come in in one lump sum. So, now in the ERP system, I got a $400,000 deposit and all the things that make it up. I get six, seven, eight different deposits, depending on which credit card got used, whether it was an ACH, whether it was a bank check, you know, that came in through the other system. We have third-party vendors that process those to us. Right? So, suddenly, we can't figure out which ones made up which, and it's, it's 2,000 transactions. I got giant spreadsheets where we literally were putting every one of them across the top and we're trying to figure it out. So, it wasn't good. And, and I wanna point out, the auditors did not indicate that the reconciliations were inaccurate. Because although they were, although they were completed late, they're in balance. They're in balance. The important reason why they would report to the board, bank reconciliations weren't done on time, is this. And anyone who reconciles your own bank knows this. If you find an error, you have to report it to the bank within 30 days. Therefore, we were at risk of having errors that we would not report in time. That's the main concern about them not being done on time. Which is completely different than they're not right, or they don't reconcile, because they all reconcile. So, as with, as with anything, you're always trying to improve processes, and I know this is a big one for us. And with, with the clerk's office, we decided we had to change something and the clerk was very forceful, we've gotta figure out a different way to do it. And we said, okay, yeah. So, now, we don't import the whole $400,000 in the whole 2,000 transactions. We wait for the deposit to hit, because I can pull reports out of the third-party vendors' reporting system and I can see which ones made up that deposit and we import them to match. Right? So, that's, that's a solution we got to. It's very effective right now. Bank reconciliations as of today are done through May and June will be done by the end of the month. You wanna have them done within 30 days. So, we are on top of that. And again, it's pains, it's growing pains of becoming, trying to become more efficient and you have to keep figuring out what's the right way to do these things. The last thing I'll just talk about is internal controls for banking. And this really ties to missing cash or lost deposits or all that. When I first took office, I could call the bank and I could ask them to wire $8 million somewhere. I provided a sheet to do it. And their check was to call my office and ask one of my employees, is this okay? Now, some of you might think, well, what could go wrong with that? Ask Clarkston-Brannon Credit Union. For anybody who's been around since 16, 616, the CFO of Clarkston-Brannon Credit Union faked documents that said he was investing money. Back then, I could've done that. Right? I could've faked up some things and sent that money to some account. As a CPA and as a CFO that I've been in the past, I had one goal when I went into a company, prevent me from stealing. Because if I can't steal, the employees can't steal. And that's how I do all my control processes. So, in this case, I couldn't believe it. I can wire $8 million just by myself. We use Chase Bank. Chase has very strong controls over managing their customers' cash. Today, in order to get, there's only four of us that can participate in wiring money and moving money. Two people in the clerk's office, finance department, the finance director and the assistant finance director, myself and my deputy. In order for me to get into my bank account, I've got an extremely complicated password and a six-digit code that revolves all the time to enter. Now, let's say the bad guy in Europe gets my password and gets my file. He can't get in. He can't get in, because it'll know his computer's never logged in before, and he's going to send a text to my phone, so if he's stealing this, he better steal my phone too, because it won't work. All of our employees have the same thing. The FOBS have to be used, we have security administrators in it. We can't put in an ACH and routing number or change one in the system without two people okaying it, every single transaction. And generally speaking, that's one person from Treasury and one from Finance, and it happens every time. So, our internal controls relative to that are as good as they can be. There's a couple more pieces to that protecting money. It is what's called debit block. Debit block, debit drove me crazy as an accountant, because banks are the opposite of businesses. When money comes out of the account, they debit it. It doesn't make sense, you know? For me, debit makes it go up. For them, it makes it go down. So, debit block means, if you take the routing and account number from the Township's bank account and put it into, put it into, I don't know, Consumers Energy, say, pay my bill out of it, it won't let them. Every bank has a bank ID number, it's not the routing number. We take the bank ID number, provide it to our contacts at Chase Bank, and we say, we allow them to take money out of our account up to this amount. And we can, so, because we do have some people that pull money out, we know about it, we allow them. That's a good protection. The other one is positive pay. Positive pay means when we still issue checks, although they're going down, because we are pushing as hard as we can to have people set up on ACH. But when we issue a check, there have been a lot of problems, not just with us, but all over. People steal the checks, what, they get the name removed, put a different name on it, and cash them. We have positive pay that includes the dollar amount, the check number, and who got paid. And if they don't match, it blocks it. It sends us a notice, says you have an exception. We get those notices every day, they usually say no exception, but there is one, boom, we're on it. If we don't react to that exception, it stops it. So we could go in and say, this one's okay, but if we don't say anything, they don't get their money. So again, really good controls right now. Even the process of sending out checks. Account payable prints all the checks. The Treasurer's Office puts them in envelopes, and while they're doing it, they compare the check to the invoice. Just, it was just another step, we're doing it anyway, why don't we just look at that and make sure they match up, and so. I know this was a little bit long-winded, but I think that a number of, a number of pretty concerning things were brought up. One of the things that concerns for me is that Township has a AA+ rating from Standard and Poor's. It's almost the highest you can get. The last thing I want to see is anybody coming out saying, we need a forensic audit, when I haven't seen any information or proof that a forensic audit should be on task here. But if we did it, Standard and Poor's, they research everything, and they go, what, wait a minute, what's this forensic audit? That could hurt us. So unless there's some specific information that needs to be addressed, coming out here and saying, we're going to do a forensic audit on all this, it's $300,000. That's, that's an estimate, and, I mean, if we did, everything that was on here, I'm not in the wrong ballpark. I'm not. That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for the presentation. I think that's going to help a lot for the residents that have some concerns, like I said. The reason I brought up this is because from the last meeting, it raised some concern when I was knocking on doors and talking with people, and I saw that it will be good to bring this up for the public. This is a good, I, this is a goodwill, and show transparency, and show the people that, that we are good, and your presentation, I think, after people see it tonight, is going to show, you know, that you brought every single point. I think it was a good presentation, Paul. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else that would like to address to the board? Oh, okay, please, about this item, please. State your name and address, please.
Tiffany Robertson, 6211 Walden Road. Paul took my presentation. I was going to say all of that. No, I, I've been 31 years in the title and escrow industry, and words and definitions, when you're talking about these things, matter. And throwing something out there really kind of is scary for residents, because we're like, what's going on? This, this, especially for people in my industry who know what this stuff means, it, it's, it just, it chips away at the confidence that we're, that we're all having right now, I believe, at least. And I just want to say that, that every single thing you brought up, that's exactly what I was concerned about. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have an audit, I just don't know that that kind of audit, under those definitions, is exactly appropriate for whatever somebody might be having a concern, because honestly, a lot of information is available, not only in the documents that are online, but it's also available if you come to the office and talk to one of these people. So, it's not that the information isn't there, it's just that it might be a little more difficult, might not be digitized or readily available for security reasons, so you just have to go ask for it. It's not necessarily that it's being hidden or that anything's been happening to it, so, that's all. Appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay. Anyone else who'd like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Linda Bazone, 7925 Foster Road. On 6/4, we had a board meeting, and there was a presentation done for a 2023 financial audit, and I had some concerns with the audit. The first one was in Appendix 1, Page 2, and the auditor stated, "We have identified the following, the following significant risks of material misstatement as part of our auditing planning. Management override of controls, improper revenue recognition." The first one, why did management override controls that were put in place? Financial controls help businesses ensure that they have the necessary funds on hand when needed, when minimizing the risk of fraud and misappropriation of funds. The second one, improper revenue recognition? Improper revenue recognition? I know that can happen. It happens on an occasional basis, something is applied to the wrong jail account, but I'm assuming that this was more than one isolated incident, or they wouldn't have put it. How many management overrides were approved? Why and by whom? And how many times was revenue improperly recognized? Is there an employee responsible for these errors, or is there a department problem? My second concern is Appendix 2, Page 6, "Bank reconciliation and year-end closing procedures." It states, "In 2023, the Township experienced employee turnover in key positions, which were responsible for various reconciliations and closing of the books at year-end. During our audit, we noted the following. We sampled bank reconciliations during the year and noted that the Township was behind on the reconciliations in the same instances for several months. Bank reconciliations related to December 2025 were not prepared until March or April of 2024. Property tax and other reconciliations related to closing the year-end were behind schedule and provided for audit later than requested. This also resulted in several journal entries being provided to us after the trial balance we received." These conditions collectively show that various reconciliations were behind in 2023, which indicates that the management reporting provided during that time and up to the current date may not be accurate. Also, not completing bank or other reconciliations timely can result in adjustments being posted significantly after the underlying transactions have taken place, which increases the likelihood of error. We recommend that the Township examine current process and staffing and take the necessary steps to ensure the bank and other reconciliations are performed on a timely basis." And I think, as I stated before, I worked in the accounting office for 15 years of a skilled nursing facility, and it's a nursing home, it's just a fancy way for skilled nursing facility. And I know that we had to close the month, every month. We had a certain date, sometimes it was by the 8th or the 10th, depending whether it fell on the weekend. There was no way that I could tell my controller that I wasn't going to be able to meet that deadline. I mean, it just wasn't going to happen, let alone for it not to happen for several months. And definitely not reconciling and closing the year would have been a fireable offense, not acceptable. It states on here that this was due to employee turnover. As you know, skilled nursing facilities struggle with turnover, and that happened all the time. But as the head of the department, I was required to roll up my sleeves, sharpen my pencil, work late, do whatever I needed to do to meet that guideline. This is a no acceptable, you know, I don't know if Carrie or Paul were aware that these things were happening and what they did. In addition to add insult to injury, on June 10th, there was a special meeting. Nancy from Legal stated that an employee who had received disciplinary action had requested an open meeting. Unfortunately, the employee did not show up. But we learned that the employee had made serious errors totaling over $100,000. Now, we're told $100,000, but is it $250,000, $300,000, $400,000? I don't know. The serious errors included missed payments, overpayments, employees who did not receive paychecks or did not have contributions for retirement corrective. One employee had to enter into a payment plan to pay the Township back for the money that was fronted due to the mistake, even trustees missed payments. This was a high-level deputy position. At the tail end of their introductory period, employee was advised that by June, they needed to make sure that they were performing these tasks. These tasks were not met with satisfaction. So it's, you know, I think that you can understand why some of the residents are concerned about our finances, and, and I hear the same thing Jose does, you know, when, you know, I'm knocking on doors, they ask about our finances, and that is why I think that Jose tried to apply this, because there are some concerns, and there were some concerns with the audit.
Sure, Mr. Wilson. State your name and address, please.
Vincent Bazone, 9725 Foster Road. I wanted to just offer a perspective. I know Paul did a wonderful job showing us everything that was in control and how he controls, controls things and so on. There may be other areas that, that are not controlled, but that's not the issue here. I think the issue is, you know, this, this, this is an amendment or proposal, whatever you call it, was put forth by Jose, and so I'm assuming that you're all going to vote no. You're all going to vote against it, because that's typically kind of how it works. But let me point out to you that this is election season, and there are fiscal improprieties that have been noted. And so if it comes out that the board rejected an audit, okay, people are going to wonder, what are you hiding? Why are you covering it up? What's going on here? The postcards will fly, as you know, okay? Things could, could turn up in the papers. It's not a good strategy. I think you're on the horns of a dilemma here. I hear what Paul is saying. You know, a forensic audit has a certain structure to it, it means something in the accounting world, right? But I think what you're looking for more is, is kind of a focused audit, comprehensive audit on certain areas that, that seem to be of interest. But that's not the point. The point is that if you vote against it, it's not going to look good. And if you vote for it, you might be stuck with something that you don't want. So, anyway, that's all I had to say.
Just, just real quick, and I understand how you read the auditor's statements relative, relative to management override of internal controls and, and improper revenue recognition. That's the auditor's plan for the audit. He identified those two things as the most important things that he would look at and try to find. He didn't find them. We spoke with the auditor, I already knew this, I believe Carrie spoke with the auditor. If you read that, the audit plan identified those as the greatest risks if they existed, not that they found them, because if they found those, they would not have issued an unmodified opinion.
It says, "We have identified the following significant risk," it says on the report.
Read, read the whole thing.
It says, "We have identified the following significant risk of material misstatement as part of our audit, audit planning."
The planning. It's the audit planning. Their planning says, what is the greatest risk we should look for? They are saying, if those existed, it's the greatest risk the Township would have if they existed. They don't exist. Again, if the auditor was here tonight, he would speak to it, but certainly I knew what he meant when he did it, and Carrie called him, because she was very concerned. Those didn't exist. They identified what existed, which was, and I've already addressed those. Bank reconciliations were not done on time. I kind of explained why they weren't done, it was, it was a narrow range of issues. I understand why that can be misunderstood, but it also leads people to start believing that there were improper revenue recognitions and management overrides when there weren't any. And so, it's, listen, this accounting stuff is not easy to follow, especially when CPAs and auditors write it. I'm glad I don't act like them most of the time, because it is confusing. And I don't blame you for thinking the way you did about it. I thought it was fair for me to point that out. And if you called our auditor, he would talk to you and explain it, I guarantee he would. His name's on that report, and you could verify what I'm saying, and he would, he would look at that for you. You're 100% right on the bank reconciliations. Yep, those should be done on time, no question about it. They did get done, and there weren't any errors in them or any, you know, any problems they reconciled when we got done. It took too long to get there, without question. And that's a joint thing between my office and the Clerk's Office, because of course, we do those things together, and so you're on point on that piece.
Okay. All right. Well, I make the motion right now. Move to auditors.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Okay, someone else.
Terry Whitney, 4814 Sundale. You know, this request for you to audit, financially audit or forensically audit the Township, if you're going to forensically audit it, one, you need to have a time period. Two, you're going to need a budget. I mean, not just saying, hey, I just want a forensic audit. Okay, we'll either make it unlimited, or set, you know, $500,000, because that's, you know, that's just the starting price for an organization about this, this size. Two, you need to actually get, remove everybody from the board and everybody that works from the Township. So it means you've got to actually have a third-party do it, and you can't control it, which means you appoint, you say, okay, you know what? We're going to appoint, because you're asking for a criminal investigation into this, into this organization, which means you give that third-party authority to pursue criminal activity, or, you know, pursue anybody here, and everybody here, and you have, you don't limit it to just financial crime. You limit it to everything. You just open it up. So if you're going to do it, I say amend the, the motion so that it affects everything here and everybody's removed. And then give them a time period of like two to five years, because that's how long it's probably going to take to go through everything. And then they'll make another motion, it's, it's going to be a mess, but what?
I'm all for it.
Hello, my name is Darwin Moore, 9165 EB. On this motion, I kind of got lost with Paul's long-winded presentation, as he said, there was a lot there. I wasn't sure that we was going on the forensic part, but I do not think that we deserve a forensic audit, or we should request one. I do not think that the man who said everyone will vote against it because Jose proposed it, I do not believe that either. I, I've seen the board vote and support Jose, and I've seen them vote, not support Jose. I, I don't think this should be a political issue. As I mentioned earlier tonight, and earlier at other times, I think it's a leadership issue. I, I think we need people to stand up and be leadership and hold things accountable, and make sure that the finance is being done. I heard Paul give all these controls and watch all this and speak on all this, yet earlier I heard him talk about 12 to 14 years of financial audits that were well, that, that were approved and passed. If we have all this going on, and these things are being overlooked year to year, and we're audited every year, correct, with a financial audit, I believe I heard you say, and we're taking overpayments and everything else, when I heard all kinds of checks and balances in there to stop those, maybe we need to take a looker, a deeper look into our work practices and who our leadership is and how they're holding things accountable. Maybe we need to go back to a five-day work week. You might be working 40 hours in four days, but maybe it's not enough. Maybe the overtime needs to be done here. You're paid a salary, we expect leadership, and we want some answers as a community. And to just frivolously throw money out to get a forensic audit, because we think that's what the people want, and it will help something that has not been shown to be a need, it's just like our, our legal bail, our budgets. We just call them every time, when we could go to the county, we could go to the state. There are a lot of resources out there that we could use a lot cheaper. So I would ask that we do not vote for a forensic audit. Start showing some leadership. I am a fiduciary financial advisor, so I have some familiarity with this. I do not think that you're acting as fiduciaries in our leadership role, and I think you need to step up to the And I think you need to step up to the plate. Whether you win the election or not, you need to do it now because you still hold your chair now. We want you to keep working up until the time you leave the office, whether it be in November or whether it be 20 years down the road. But you're not showing the leadership we want in that position. That's why there are so many people running and so many people upset with what's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else online? Any other board members?
I'm here.
Okay, would I like to say something?
Uh, yes, I would like to thank Paul.
State your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie. Uh, I don't have any address there.
Okay.
I'm a former employee, but I would like to thank Paul for coming out and discussing the bank reconciliations. That was really nice of him. Um, because when I was employed there, I started, like I said, um, a couple of weeks ago, started back there in September and August was not reconciled until I think it was the end of November. And I think Paul needs to let everyone know when December was actually reconciled because we couldn't reconcile those bank racks until probably January, February, until he got his department in order for those to get reconciled. Um, that's why the audit was so late and they were worried about it. But I want to thank Paul for actually coming up to the plate and saying, look, his department was the reason why uh, bank racks were not done. But like I said before, when I started in September, September 11th, 2023, bank racks were not reconciled up until February of 2023. So I inherited a mess when I started there. But I would like to go to the one lady that said, now it's up to $350,000 on mistakes. That's ridiculous. But you know, the truth will come out. But I just want to thank Paul for coming up there and explaining the bank racks of how messed up they were. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Trustee Morocco.
Oh, sorry, someone else is coming up to the podium.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Mainville Line, 6486 East Salt Avenue. Um, Paul, I appreciate the presentation you did as well. It was a lot of information. And if the books are that good, um, I think it should be pretty open shut. So I think it's worth exploring, getting three to five quotes from forensic auditors, getting a scope of work from them and getting a, a range of funds, a range of costs that it would be from them and then making our decision. So can someone else come in, look at these specific things for 50,000? And then it's a lot easier to make a decision. And I would also request or recommend using someone besides our current auditor, since there is audio out there right now of him kind of laughing with some people, some of the employees, saying this is a way we can twist it and this is a way we can cover it up from last year's audit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Paul.
I just want to reiterate, no one's going to give a bid on this job. I already talked, I've already talked to people. When you go into a forensic audit, you have no idea how long it will take. And they can't bid $50,000 and then dig into something and find out it cost them 100 because they'd make half the money. They're only going to do it based on us paying them their hourly rate, which is going to be, you know, 300 to 450 an hour. And it takes what it takes. That's what, that's what the engagement will say. So if the supervisor wants to go out and confirm that, they should do that, bring this back. We can't bid, we can't vote on something that doesn't have a budget because we don't have an open checkbook to spend every, all this money when I've yet to see anything that indicates there's any significant issues relative to the finances. Show me something.
I think Vince hit it on the head. That was my first, when I saw this MAF come forward, that was my first initial instinct is that, um, that this was just to put out there so we could all with common sense vote no against it because it's so vague and ridiculous and expensive that, and, um, kind of Jose jumping out of his seat to make the motion kind of reiterated that to me, that he's so anxious to make the motion so we can deny it and use it against us, um, which I don't, I, I'm the one that certainly doesn't care about that. So, um, but I miss, when I first read it, so it says, "Move to authorize the initiation of a financial forensic audit to thoroughly investigate the following areas of concern: water, sewer and billing, payroll, vacation, other paid time off versus HR allowances, overtime, tax distribution to vendors compared to tax received, any instances of overpayment, underpayments, missing deposits, lost money, reconciliation issues." That is absurd. That makes zero sense to anyone who knows what we're talking about. I am all for busting people for overpaying, calling out the board for overpaying, wasting money. They are too on things. Um, I'll vote against it. Send a postcard. Use the picture that you used on the big board because that was a good picture. I got a lot of comments on that. I appreciate that. The, um, but my first note, right away as soon as like, who's, who's interested in this? Who's actually calling for it? Who, who's, are the people that you're knocking on doors that have zero knowledge of anything that are like, hey, let's, you know, there's always conspiracy theories. Christ, everybody's crooked, you know? I mean, that's the consensus. Not a single document was provided. Not a single example was provided. Nothing was in our packet, not even in our private packet that we get to see sometimes if it's under the consent agenda. That's not public knowledge. There was literally, here's a motion that we can certainly all not get behind. Let's put it on the agenda. Let's throw it out there. Um, the, what's the, my notes, what is the audit based on? Don't know. Give examples of why you think this is necessary. Looks like a fishing expedition or a witch hunt. I'm not sure which one. Makes no sense. It's so vague. Missing deposits, lost cash? I mean, it's, it's crazy. I'll vote for an audit. Does that help? But we're not going to do an audit. We can't even get a bid for an audit. We don't even have a scope of work for an audit. This doesn't even give us a motion to make. This is just move to authorize the initiation of a financial forensic audit. That is just absurd. That is as sloppy as it gets. Um, so, uh, you'd have to have a reason. Then you'd have to have a specific thing we're voting on. Then we'd have to put it out for a bid if it was even possible to get a ballpark bid. Do you know what I'm saying? And then we have to figure out where, who's, where are we? How are we paying for this to get this information that we don't know? I mean, it's, it's, um, you know, postcard, no postcard, call me out tomorrow, I don't care. This is, uh, this is, is exactly what I just said it was. Um, uh, and it's obvious to anybody that's paying attention, you know? I don't know who wrote it, but whoever wrote it could have made it more believable. That's all.
Well, I'll, uh, no, no thunder. I, I concur wholeheartedly with, with trustee Morocco. I share his frustrations. This is sloppy at best. I, and I want to, I want to say every one of us on the board care about transparency, care about fiscal stewardship, care about fiscal responsibility. And for goodness sake, you know, the, again, the human inside of me feels bad about not giving, that not giving the city, the village of Clarkston $100,000 or whatever the difference was, right? But yet we're being asked to open our checkbook on a forensic audit that's as ambiguous as it can be. It's, if this were, if this were my refrigerator, instead of saying, Jim, I think you ate my chocolate chip ice cream. You want me to, you want to like look through the whole, spend the time to go through every single item? That's what you're representing here. It's, it's an ambiguous list of just about every aspect of township business. And it's irresponsible that you would ask us to support this. I'll also add, your opening comments, and I'm, I apologize, I'm a little bit more heated than normal because this really, really set me off. I believe everything is right. And people can watch the video. They can, they can go on YouTube tomorrow. I believe everything is right. I have lots of data. Those two things alone, the absence of data and the fact that you believe everything is right, this is a mood issue. We've had two years of audits that you, as the chief executive of this township, signed off on. And yet now, the two-week window, Mr. Bazone was spot on. He, he externalized what I was thinking. It's already printed. I'm sure your consultant has it. The ink is still wet. This mailer is going to go out in three days that the township board voted against a forensic audit. Gosh darn right we did because guess what? It's our fiduciary responsibility to be good fiscal stewards of township money. And I'm not going to put our township on the hook for some willy-nilly ambiguous proposal. May I also add, all these concerned residents, there was one here and she misrepresented the findings in the audit. I, I'm in disbelief tonight. I really am. I'm embarrassed. And we owe our township residents better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. First of all, I don't know what print it are you talking about. I don't have any print it or anything. So I don't know what, what accusation is. I don't have nothing that uses about that. I got concerns and, uh, former employee came again and says few things. And then in the past, in the last meeting, also she addressed some concerns. People were asking. I don't have any problem, but I, um, I think this is the right thing to do is initiation of finance. So I asking for authorization to start looking which companies and have the, the bid process and all that.
That's not what this says.
Yeah, it's the initiation, move to authorization to initiate.
Initiate of a financial forensic audit. It's, it's to start the forensic audit.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking for. And, um, you keep saying that these people, well, give us an, I'm all for it. Tell me what they told you that would make me want to look further into it. That's it. Give me one hard example of fraud or misuse of funds or something went wrong that I can get around that would make us, that we haven't found on our own, that our financial auditors haven't found, you know, haven't found that we do, that, that would warn it. And we can talk about looking into that item. You're not, there's no way that you knocked on 10,000 doors and this list of concerns came up of these 30 items that are, that we're worried about. There's got to be something. What specifically triggered this? What, what, and, and we can talk openly about it if there's some violation, you know? Just tell us, what is it? What do you want us to look at specifically? Not this make-believe list, exactly what you want us to look at. And I'm behind it. If you can show that there's any chance of impropriety, um, and then that would narrow our forensic audit down to a very minimal thing and it'd be very specific and it would be very cost controlled. That's a fair request to make of you. Tell us exactly what you're looking for.
Okay. Sam, that's why I want to do this because we don't know. We don't know what is there. It's a lot of concern after what happened, after what happened with the former employee saying that.
What former employee said what? Tell us what she said that we want to audit.
She came up again and she says there is some concerns.
Of what? What specific concern? Is it the water department? Is it the HR allowances? Is it overtime? Is it tax distribution? Is it vendor, vendor receiving payments? Is it overpayment? What did she ask you? What is her concern? You got to tell us what her concern is, you know? These aren't even all things that are in her wheelhouse. So there's no way that this list by one employee that was released justifies hundreds of thousands of dollars of expenditure if you can't produce a specific. And that's, I think that's a fair request is give us a specific. Somebody wants to talk.
Yes.
Belinda Billings, 6025 Cedar Bend Drive. I'd just like to make a suggestion only because I've heard some of the things that Jose is talking about. So the water sewer is the big deal. So can you not do a forensic audit for just that portion? And do a not to exceed? If you can't get a bid, surely you could do a not to exceed amount.
So we, the board's already authorized going to find someone to audit that, but it's not done by a forensic accountant. Accountants don't do that because it's not a financial issue. The financial issue was driven by the fact that the wrong REU got assigned to the commercial property. So that's an operational issue and a management issue, not a financial.
But it results in a financial issue.
I understand that, but the auditor, I've already asked the auditors. Accountants don't do that. This, I've got to find someone, and the board's already authorized that to happen, who will come in and do an audit of how many REUs got assigned to each commercial property based on what our ordinance says and what that commercial business is, right? And apply those rules. That's some kind of a management consultant. It's not an accountant. That, that's not a forensic audit. So we have to, we have to find that person and the board's already, sorry, I'd like to check, speak. So, so the board's already authorized that. And we're searching for who that person is and we'll bring back those bids to the board to approve. That piece is going to be done. The board's already approved it.
Just for clarification, at the last meeting, Paul brought up a specific item. We felt that the REUs were not equated correctly and we were losing money on the commercial developments because of occupancy and other things. The board then, I think, voted unanimously to hire, uh, an engineering firm or whoever it would be that does that to come in and, and investigate that. We just did that at the very last meeting. I mean, that's how it works. And, and that's how it'll work tonight. Tell us specifically what your, your concerns are and we can, we can vote to address the concerns like we did with the REU audit at the last meeting. That's, you know, it wasn't a forensic audit, but it was an audit. And we have, we have, we approved it to be done. I think that's, how much more can you do?
And whose responsibility is to act upon the board's motion to procure and hire this person?
My motion authorized me to go search that.
You to do, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Could I offer a suggestion?
Is it public comment or? Point of order, let's go. Take control of the meeting.
I'm not supposed to be talking now, right? Because that's the point of order.
Not two times. We already, we already.
But I've got a good idea that you're not going to hear because it's point of order.
I know, but.
Coffee in the morning. Coffee in the morning.
I think there's a solution. There's a couple of solutions.
We already. Yeah, no, Vince, we already in, um, we already in discussion.
Do you want me to sit down?
Yes, please, because we already, we already finished with that. Yeah, we just, we just closed them. All right. Okay, Carrie.
You don't have anything constructive that you can bring forward that we can narrow this search down with tonight? Do you have specific details?
I put a specific right there.
But that's not, that's not narrowing down the scope. I just think it, I think this is something that still has to be discussed. I think we need more information. We don't have our auditor here. I think we're trying to answer questions on that person's level that we're not equipped to answer.
Okay.
And the public has questions. And the public has questions. So I think this is something that we need to have him here, and if we can bring this back to the next meeting where we may have more information, we can narrow this down better and then target those questions and find out if that's something that a forensic audit takes care of, if that's something that's internal controls that we need to look at ourselves and to better pave this path for us that seems to be very uncertain right now. It's so big. And I don't think the residents or the taxpayers realize what it could cost. Yes, it appears that there's a need, but, and we won't know if the need is valid or not until we do more investigation. I just don't think that we have enough knowledge before us to proceed tonight. I just don't. And are they willing to pay $600,000?
We don't need $600,000.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. A budget didn't, it didn't come with a budget review from your department. Our MAFs usually come or always come if it deals with money. Is this budgeted? I know the answer. It is not budgeted. Did we get a budget review from the budget analyst? No, we did not. Has legal looked at this? No, they did not.
Yes, well, I referred to Dan Kelly to prepare the MAF. I need us, and.
Okay, wait. The law firm prepared the MAF, but they didn't provide us with an opinion, a legal opinion. That would be legal review, because on here it says legal review, not applicable, meaning we don't need it. Budget review, not applicable, we don't need it. In my opinion, we need legal review and we need a budget. And I think there's just a lot of things that are up in the air, and I don't, I think it warrants bringing it back. We're better prepared, we're better equipped with people that can answer questions than us trying to, you know, pull it out this evening to move forward.
Ron?
Yeah, I guess my comments are this, I'd like to thank Mr. Bazone for coming up and stating what this is exactly. It's just a, it's a political MAF. It has nothing to do with the township, making the township better in any way. This is a, it shows a total lack of leadership from our supervisor, that he followed none of the rules to submit a MAF to this board. There's no supporting documentation. There's no proper data to even support the MAF in the first place. You know, piggybacking off what Sam and Mr. Tetter said as well, that, you know, it's, if you had one shred of one example in here, then, you know, there might be something to talk about. There's nothing in here that is any specifics to make any move to even present a motion because, you know, for one, this board should never approve any MAF that doesn't have a budget associated with it or some legality of what we're trying to do. And this, like, this to me, Jose, just shows a total lack of leadership on your, on your part to not follow any of the rules of the township.
Well, we can amend up to $50,000. And then let me look, let me put for a bid and see.
And then what?
Who's money?
Okay, hold on. Are you?
All right.
I got one last thing.
All right, Sam.
I just wanna bring in, let the residents know also that this MAF encompasses distributions and vendors to be forensically investigated with the schools, the library, and the county besides the township. So that's what we're asking for. So on that note, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the MAF and the budget can be addressed correctly and it can be brought back to the board for review. That's, that's my motion.
I'll support.
Okay, roll call, right? Oh, no, it's simple.
No, we simple majority, it's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay.
What's that, an opposing by you?
Mm-hmm.
Did you say nay? Okay. Just wanted to put that in the record.
Buy it. Session, break.
Still awake, Rick?
What's that?
Still awake?
Sure.
I know, he puts us to sleep. We don't put him to sleep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for sticking around.
I'm sorry, I had some kind of reasons.
Lauren, she's.
Where'd he go?
Can we talk to her?
Because he decided he wanted to break. What are you doing? Kevin Daniels, Kevin Daniels is here. He wants to speak. He missed the, beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
I guess, I guess we're on our next item. Go ahead and go.
We're continuing without the supervisor. How about we let him get his.
All right, you want me to step in?
Can somebody, folks, we're still in session. I don't, I don't, not, there's no one in the chair, but we are still in session right now. There's not a break.
Carrie, you wanna step up?
I think Rick's got the floor, right?
I do. You want me to?
I'd like to assume chair.
Just one item, one item. Kevin Daniels is here. He was late to the meeting, and he'd like to speak to.
Yeah, I was gonna.
I think that's fine.
He'd like him to be here.
Yeah, fine. Let's have Rick do his thing first, is that?
I can interrupt you too.
We would never do that, Rick. This thing is edge-of-your-seat stuff you bring to us. There's nobody interrupting it.
I know, I think we presented all of it.
We're gonna get through it as quick as we can.
So we're gonna continue with M1, the budget session.
Okay, so annually, we go through a whole budget process. It involves pretty much every fund that is out there, every department that's out there. And what this is, it's just to kinda kick the budget season off with the board, kinda let you have a little bit of an idea of what we're thinking and how we're gonna put this thing together, some of the assumptions that we're using, and then we're gonna go through some data about the actual individual funds themselves. So basically, starting out, we got budget assumptions and potential changes. Medical, it's always a big thing out there. The township has adopted, many years ago, they adopted to use state caps. The state actually comes out with limits on what the township can pay for medical, and the board adopted that. So we continue to use that. Every year, they come up with a new number. It typically comes out in, I don't know, somewhere around May, June, July, somewhere in that range, and we have an idea what the next year's numbers are gonna be. So in this past, the past report that we got was a slight increase. It was only a 0.2% increase on the state cap, which I think is ridiculous because insurance costs, as everyone knows, is skyrocketing. But it is what it is. We have to use that. From a budgeting standpoint, though, I'm gonna use 5%. And the reason being is that in the past, like in 2024, it was a 4.1% increase. Then it dropped to a 1.3 in '23, then back up to 3.7 in '22. Basically, all these numbers that are coming in, they're less than 5%, but I'm not comfortable going at, say, 2% or 3%. And I think it's not hurting anything by using a 5%. So that's what I've been using for the last several years, and it seems to be working pretty well for us. So I'm gonna probably stick with that again. As far as increases for life, short-term and long-term disability, in 2025, there's actually no increase. The company that we do business with, they're actually keeping the rates flat for 2025. But starting in '26 and '27, which are those two years that we budget, we're actually gonna throw a 7.5% increase in both of those. And then we actually use 10% increase for dental and optical. I had a small number, but we still throw an increase in there. Moving on to wages. There's actually two areas here. We have union and we have non-union. From the union side, we have a contract that we have to deal with, and that contract basically calls for a 3% increase in '25, a 2% increase in '26, and then we're on a contract with them. So I talked to the supervisor and our HR director, and we just said, let's just use 3%. It's two years out, we can change it. It's not anything that we're gonna be held to. It's just a number that we can use just to populate the fields. From a, from a non-union standpoint, again, we had a salary study that was done, a lot of that's still being narrowed down and worked on as far as how we're going to implement it. So in the meantime, we were looking at anywhere between a 3 and a 6% increase, but we're gonna budget at the 3% side for non-union employees for all three years, '25, '26, and '27. There's gonna be performance evaluations, as far as I am aware, that are gonna be introduced with this. And anybody who gets an increase over that 3%, we'll just come back to the board, explain what happened, because it'll be done at the same time, and we'll just do a budget amendment to clean things up. I can't think of another way to do this other than that. I know we've talked about possibly having a little pool of money. Well, that's gonna involve the same thing. If you put that little pool of money on the balance sheet, you still gotta come back to the board and get a budget amendment to move it off the balance sheet and put it where it needs to go. So this just seemed to be the easiest thing to do to solve that problem, at least in the short term. Growth. I did have a conversation with our building director, and we always come up with, how many homes are gonna be built over the next few years? And he gave me a figure of 125 new homes in '25, 100 in '26, and 75 in '27. So we're gonna use those numbers for a number of different things. A lot of it really pertains to water and sewer, because that's where they base their permits off and connection fees and everything else. So that's where we kinda use those numbers. Expenditures. Despite rising costs, we'll look for ways to decrease expenses, obviously. Scrutinize current charges to see if there are alternatives that make sense. So that's something that I believe every one of our department directors who has a hand in doing budgets, they're all very fiscally responsible. They're constantly looking for the better price. So I have a lot of confidence that when our budgets are put together, they are the best prices that we can get. Presentation changes, really nothing from the last couple of years. We're gonna stick with the new labor schedule compared to the prior year, and we'll explain budget variance greater than $5,000. Moving on to the millage and headley reductions. There has been and will be a slight headley reduction in 2025. The percentage is actually .9949. So what that does is it actually pulls our current millage rates down, and that's an effort to basically keep taxes kinda controlled. And there's a lot too headley, and I'm not gonna go into all of it, but it does impact in certain years the actual millage rate that we can levy. So the overall increase for 2025, there's $991,000 is primarily based on growth for 2025. In the general fund, we have a $123,000 increase, and that's net of an $11,000 reduction due to headley. The fire fund, $441,000 increase, and $38,000 of that has been reduced for headley. Police, $373,000, $32,000 was reduced for headley. And then the safety path, $54,000, $5,000 reduction for headley. So it kinda does show you that, you know, that there are, there money's coming out of our, our normal money that we levy and collect due to headley. Now, there is a sheet that I put in here, it's, I believe it's the fourth one back. This is a cumulative of fact of headley since 2015, '16. So what this does is that it basically shows what the original millage was, it shows what the millage rate is that we're gonna be levying in 2025, calculates the difference, and then based on the actual 2024 taxable value, which is what we use to calculate the fiscal '25 tax revenue, it comes up with a loss revenue. And as you can see from the schedule, $1.3 million we have lost over that not-quite-10-year timeframe just due to headley. That's a lot of money. So again, just trying to throw that out there, just so everyone has a better perspective of what that actually does to the township and its millage-based funds. Okay? Any questions on that?
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to fund overviews. The general fund, have a healthy fund balance, $1.1 million. We had an $810,000 surplus in 2023. We do have to take developer escrow money, which was, it was a gas fee ruling, we had to roll that into our fund balance a couple of years back. There's $670,000 that's sitting there. Obviously, we really can't touch that money because it is developer money. The cemetery fund balance, it actually adds another $674,000, but it's limited to cemetery use only. The fund balance is at 141.8% of annual expenditures. We have a, this is one scares me a little bit, a large decrease in cable franchise activity. This is gonna be the first year where we're gonna fall short of our $600,000 budget. We've been planning for this and anticipating it, had to come through, but it has slowly been coming through over the years, and this is the first year where I do not believe we are gonna hit the $600,000. I'm gonna have to really scrutinize it hard to determine what the budget is going forward, how fast this, this money is coming down. But that's a big number that the township at some point in the near future may have to absorb that. $600,000 is nothing to bat an eye at. That's gonna be very difficult to replace. So this is something to keep in mind. The proposed millage rate for '24, '25 is .9395. Moving on to fire. Fund balance of $3.8 million. They had a $441,000 deficit in 2023. Fund balance is at 58% of annual expenditures. Their CIP fund balance, because they do manage two funds, is $5.4 million. That happens to be the fund where all their large equipment purchases come from, and they had a $2.3 million surplus in 2023. We're gonna continue with their established capital plan. It's about a 20-year plan. We're really looking down the road at these guys just because of the very expensive cost of their equipment. Continuing the annual contribution to the pension plan liability at roughly $300,000 a year over the next 20 years. That should pay that all down. Yes, sir.
Didn't they modify this? Aren't they putting in like 80 grand a month?
It's possible, but it's somewhere in that still $300,000 range as far as I'm aware, but, I mean, I don't believe they're doing 80,000 a month. But, yeah, I'll do a double check on that. Yeah, that's why, I know they're paying it down.
Because he, he thought it was gonna be done in 10 years.
Right.
This is why they, they're accelerating it, so.
Yes, yep, okay. Medic number three, scheduled to be replaced in 2025. Car number five, scheduled to be replaced in 2025. The millage was renewed in 2020 and expires at the end of '24. The board approved the millage increase to 3.8716, which is roughly about a half a, half a mil increase, beginning with the '25, '26 year, and that was providing that the public approves it in August of '24. The proposed millage rate for '24, '25 is 3.372. Moving on to the police fund. Fund balance of $2.3 million. They had $162,000 surplus in '23. Fund balance is at 35% of the annual expenditures. We're looking to expand office area within the next couple of years. Millage was renewed in 2022 and expires at the end of '25, and the proposed millage rate for '24, '25 is 2.8531. Parks and Rec. We're currently planning to add roughly $100,000 over the normal $200,000 that we contribute to the general CIP fund in '25 to support new projects like Clintonwood Walking Trail, Concrete Sidewalk, Sashville Plains, Garage Roof and Building Repairs, Deer Lake Beach Ramp Replacement, Bay Court Beach Emergency Call Tower, planning and development of athletic fields on the new property, and infield broomer and rake and various mowers that they need over the, over the next couple of years. We'll continue to add dollars to the general CIP fund as additional needs are identified. Moving on to the safety path. Fund balance of $3 million. They have a $495,000 surplus in '23. Fund balance is at 684% of annual expenditures. Continue to build paths. Currently, what's planned is the Walden Road Safety Path. It's just simply a widening of the existing path. I think there's roughly 2,000 feet, I think it was. Greenview between Clarkston Road and Sugarloaf, and then they're also looking to replace one zero turn mower. We're continuing with $150,000 annually for path maintenance, primarily to replace and repair boardwalks and path and paths that need, you know, to be dealt with for tripping hazards and whatever. Millage was renewed in 2018 and expires at the end of 2028. The proposed millage rate for '24, '25 is .414. Moving on to sewer. Based on the '23 audit, revenues are covering expenditures. We're gonna continue to pass the sewage treatment increases from the county to the residents, which has stopped the bleeding in this fund. We have an unrestricted fund balance or net position of $10.7 million. We have continued work on identified repairs to sewer pipes per pipeline and HRC recommendations. And then the Parview Lift Station rehab scheduled for 2024 has been pushed out to '25 or later due to cost estimates coming in higher than anticipated. On the water side, again, based on the '23 audit, revenues are covering expenditures. We have an unrestricted fund balance here or net position of 5.9 million. They are applying for a DWSRF loan to address water distribution system improvements through the Maybe Road Water Main Extension, which includes connections and extensions, or extension, yeah, extension water mains within the township main loop system. Proposed projects include, in section 16, approximately 4280 feet of water main will be connected through Clintonwood Park from Clintonwood Road to Deerwood Road. This connection between the Deerwood Water System and the main water loop system will provide redundancy and reliability to provide high-quality water to township residents. The second project is in section 33 and 34, approximately 18,000 feet of water main will be extended on streets in the Drayton subdivision area bordered by Maybe Road to the north and Pelton Road to the south. The Maybe Road Water Main Extension will provide safe, reliable, and consistent quality water to residents currently without a public water supply. And there is no rate increase scheduled for this year. Moving on to finance-related activity. Moving on to finance-related activity, this is primarily related to ARPA, the money that we got a couple of years ago. We did receive the second half of the estimated $3.8 million American Rescue Act funding. It was all received in '22, projects have been identified, they've been worked, some have been completed. They were all approved by the board in '22. Things that weren't finished were carried over in '23, so they could be finished. Once projects started finishing up, there was, there were excess funds, so we re-looked at it again, came up with some new projects, came back to the board, we were able to re-appropriate some of those dollars into new projects that are currently in the works. All projects need to be completed, I believe this is correct, by the end of '25. We have one more year to finish this up, but we've got most of them well underway. There's very few of them that haven't been addressed at this point. Meeting times, there's gonna be three meetings to address all the budgets that we're gonna be doing, doing this year, starting with September 24th, and we have one on October 22nd, and then finally November 12th. Public hearing will be on November 26th, and budget approval should be around December 17th. And then there is a timeline also in here for your, for your perusal, and it lays every one of those things out, specifically which, which budgets are gonna be presented on what day. Other than that, that is everything. I mean, is there anything that we missed, that you would like to see changed, or?
Very good. I need some clarification, cause I don't understand the millages exactly. As it pertains to the fire millage, people are saying, you know, hey, with the new housing and development, that tax increase should cover the fire department, why would we need more money, you know, why isn't that fixing that problem, you know? I, I just don't know that, you know, I don't, just not familiar with how.
You referring to this, that half a mil that we're, that we're proposing to do?
Yeah, that, I know that we keep losing, you know, every year, but in that, with headley, but it, how does it, just for my knowledge, how does it work with, we get, we get, we collect more taxes each year because of development, you know, but that's not enough to offset the cost of, you know, equipment and, and an extra staff person and all of that, but that's what, in people's minds, they, they're like, well, we're already, you know, have all this development, it should be covering that additional cost that we need, when that's not the data that we're getting from Dave and from our budgets for the fire department. So I just, I do agree that it does not make us whole, just by the slow growth.
Correct.
I can, I can think of two pieces of this. Number one, new homes coming in results in more runs. So they're contributing to the fire department, the police department, but they're also gonna have some percentage of runs associated statistically with how many new homes come in. So you're adding more volume by having more homes. In addition to that, it looks like inflation related to fire equipment is significantly higher than everything, you think bread and milk and meat is higher? But we had fire trucks that doubled in cost.
No, I get that part of it.
Massive increases, so, so, just trying to cover that, and, and I believe the projections the fire department is doing takes into account increases in tax base. And they still, without this, end up showing negative, we, we end up going backwards.
Yep, we do.
So.
I've got all the numbers, if you'd like to see them.
I just wanted to be able to talk more intelligently about it, cause it's not my field, you know?
Those couple things, I think people can understand.
Well, that too, plus they're, with the increase in population, they're also looking at adding additional hats to their, to each one of their.
Patients.
Their stations and, and, you know.
For the first time in 20 years.
Right, exactly. I mean, they've been, with the massive increase that they've had in runs and everything like that, their staffing hasn't changed, and it's really putting a strain on them. So it's meant to deal with that as well, and then they have union negotiations coming up, and we have no idea what's gonna come out of that. So it's just basically, this half a mil will put them in a way better place, they need a new station, or something needs to be done with station number three. It's in very poor shape.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to try to deal with that, and hopefully this extra half a mil with them provide additional funding, where we can actually go out and maybe build a building or find something that we can remodel or something, where, yeah, we come up with the right answer, yeah.
Okay.
But that's, that's primarily the reason for the half, half a mil increases, cause they have a lot of big issues to deal with, and the current millage is a cutnet for them if they wanna move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Rick, I came out of the board at the tail end of the last budget season, and I just had a question about the ARPA funding. Now, um, those, once those funds are used, there, we won't have any legacy costs associated with those projects, like.
Nothing I am aware of, unless you talk, maybe electricity or stuff like.
Right, like maintenance perhaps, but not FTEs and all the things that sometimes are like conditional relative to the funding, so, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, one great example is like the fuel depot that's being built with ARPA funds.
Okay.
I mean, the whole township uses that, anybody who uses township vehicles, you know, so, and it's just, yeah, you have normal maintenance to it, cause you, obviously you have maintenance for stuff that moves and operates, you know?
Right.
So you can't get away from that.
Right.
But it's a much better system, it's gonna be more efficient, and we'll be able to build people a lot easier and more accurately.
Perfect, okay.
I think what Mr. Ted was saying, now, there's no fees that you know of on any of the ARPA money that we're using, that's been invested, that requires us to make some payments in the future.
I'm not aware of anything, nothing at all would, would fall under that kind of criteria that I'm aware of, it's.
I think some of the budget increases, we're, we're talking about the reserves that's increased, you know, it's a little bit higher than normal because we did have those ARPA funds, and some of that money would have, would have been spent if we wouldn't have had the ARPA funds, cause they were still all projects that were planning on, on doing, so.
Yes, exactly, yep. And it's, it's a big relief for us.
Right, so I mean, I think, I think a couple of years ago, we, you know, like the fuel depot and stuff like that, those are things that we were planning to spend money on, but.
Correct.
You know, because we had the plan ready to go, and ARPA money was available, we, we utilized that to, to help save some, some of our reserve money that we were gonna spend at that time, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
You have it, September 22nd.
Thanks, Rick.
Well, I'm sure we'll see you before.
Communications, future agenda, I don't report, report Orklin County Sheriff's Office.
One thing, Jose.
Sure.
Kevin Daniels is here, and he missed the beginning of the meeting, you wanna know if he could speak before the meeting is over?
Well, no, because we already, I mean, I didn't give opportunity to other people to speak.
I think that's why I bring it up, I wanna see if the board will entertain a motion to let this employee speak.
I'll support it.
I'll support it.
I'll support it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, was there a vote?
Did we vote?
We didn't get a motion in a second, it wasn't official.
I'll make a motion that we allow Kevin Daniels, a township employee, to speak at this time.
Second.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay.
That doesn't surprise me. The fact that you said you did not use the term "I've got proof" is why I'm here. I'm walking my dog, listening to the, the board meeting on my phone, Tony brought it up, and thank you for doing so, but you know, when you use terms like that, that's like a form of, you know, harassment or intimidation. When I explained to you, they didn't touch them, in fact, they weed-whipped underneath all of them because they didn't wanna touch them, and then you say you didn't use that term, you probably don't even remember the conversation, or you're gonna say you didn't have it. I addressed it in an email, I would like to see the proof. If you, if you don't have it, intimidation, if you have it, I'll get to the bottom of it, we'll make sure it never happens again. But I don't like how you handled the situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, now communication and future reports. Orklin County Sheriff's Office, June 24th. Minutes of Election Commission, June 20, '24. Minutes Residential Open Space Adversary Committee, May 20, '24. For Minutes of Residential Open Space Adversary Committee, June 20, '24. Board member comments. Terry?
I have a couple. Between the last few meetings, it's just, there's no consistency in, in how you're running them. We're not supposed to reply at public comment, but then when there's somebody comes up and says something against you, you go ahead and say something back. A couple of weeks ago, all of us were berated by many people, one after one after one, and we couldn't defend ourselves, but when somebody comes up and says something against you, you go ahead and defend yourself in the middle of public comment. And then today, there was a couple of times we had whole discussions during public comment. It's either five minutes that they speak and we don't say a word, or we have to put it somewhere else on the agenda that there's actual discussion. But there's Robert's Rules, they're not being followed, it's a free-for-all, and I'm just a little, I'm a little tired of it. We need to get to what the rules are, public comment is five minutes, if you give them a little extra courtesy, that's up to you, I don't mind it here and again, but we either get our chance to have discussion with them, or we don't. It can't be wishy-washy every time, based on what somebody says and how you feel. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Wait, I'd like to say something as well, please, thank you. I won't belabor the Robert's Rules point, but that was something that's been weighing on me as well, that there's really no, there's no approach, no cadence, no, no organization to that, so I would respectfully ask that, that you perhaps consider, there's lots of online tutorials and videos, there's many versions of Robert's Rules to give you the highlights, because it really is important for efficiency sake and objective fairness to all residents, cause some residents speak for three minutes, some residents speak for 20, and I think they all deserve equal treatment, and Robert's Rules will ensure that. I'd also, I guess I can say I've been embarrassed twice tonight, and the second, of course, being Kevin Daniels. I've known Kevin, I might be off by a year either direction, but I've known Kevin for 40 years, and he's a man of integrity, he's someone I've known since I grew up in this town, he's a high school friend, I give him the keys to my house, I trust him with my kids, and it's, it's really unfortunate that, that he had to come and defend his honor tonight, but I'd also like to defend his honor, he's a good man, and I appreciate him coming tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.